Woo.
That's official.
I gotta stop scratching and picking my nose.
So where are we at? How many folks we got online here? Let me see.
We have seven online. And so if you.
At the most, we will have nine if everyone shows it's supposed to show. So.
Yeah.
Everyone.
Have seven online.
So I would suggest seating Susan as a full member for the evening.
Okay. And Charlie can join us when he gets here.
Yes.
So Stacy is coming.
Okay.
Stacy's on the line. Okay.
So we ready to rock and roll?
Welcome, Susan.
Yeah, go ahead, Peter.
Okay. Hello, everybody. My name is Peter Burnett. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board of the City of Laconia. Due to COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that while there is a physical location to observe and listen to the meeting, the meeting is also being conducted electronically, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. Participants may choose which option to use. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are providing public access to this meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. So in addition to the in-person option, we are utilizing the Zoom platform for this meeting. We're all members of the board. We'll have the ability to communicate with each other and the public will have access to watch or listen to the meeting through dialing the following phone number. One six four six five five eight eight six five six. To participate in the meeting, you need to log on to Zoom and then type the webinar ID, which is eight two four one oh five five two nine seven oh. We're providing public notice of this necessary information for accessing the meeting. It's on the city website and all the public notices of tonight's meeting that are posted in accordance with the law. And we are also providing a mechanism for the public to alert us during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem with access, please call five two four three eight seven seven, extension two four nine, or email planning@laconianh.gov. We have to adjourn the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable, we will adjourn it to a date and time certain. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. So if we can call the meeting to order now, we'll start with a roll call attendance. When each board member states their presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is a requirement under the right to no law.
Do you want me to start?
Oh, yes. I thought I had introduced you. Ladies and gentlemen, Kalina Graham with the roll call.
Bruce Chaney.
President in the council chambers.
Charlie Sinclair.
Here likewise.
Sarah Jenna.
At home alone.
Kirk Biati.
Remote and alone.
Rich McNeil.
Remote and alone with one neurotic dog.
Remote and alone.
Susan Hodgkins.
Remote and alone.
Stacy Susie.
Home alone.
Peter Burnett.
Home Alone. Sounds like a movie, doesn't it? Let's see, I guess with Stacy on, do we still need Susan? I would think it would be all right to seat her, right? As a full member.
Until Mike arrives, yes.
Until Mike arrives. Okay, so you'll be a full member until the secretary arrives. The staff and attendants tonight, Dean Schreppen, Rob Mora, and Kalina Graham. I think by now you've all received copies of the minutes from the May 4th meeting. Are there any comments or additions or corrections from the board? Sensing none, then I'll declare the meeting minutes accepted from the May 4th meeting. Let's see, what do we have here? First, on the item. This is an extension request, I believe, right? PL twenty nineteen zero zero six nine SP amended Endicott North Pine Hollow Campground. That's right. Request to extend the approval to add thirty-six more lots. Do we have an applicant or an applicant's representative present?
Yeah, yeah, I can.
Is it Mr. Heavy? Rob? Anybody?
Can you hear me?
I can. Is this Mr. Mr. Heavy?
Yes, it is.
Oh, well, welcome, sir. How are you?
Fine, thanks. And you?
I'm just ducky.
Yeah.
So. What's going on? You're requesting an extension.
Correct. We were, like everyone else, we ran into a lot of problems with the COVID. Prices on material have skyrocketed. We had couldn't hire anybody up there. We sat down with three different contractors and none of them would even price the job. But I guess they were having the same problem. They couldn't, you know, they couldn't get a budget on their material cost.
Yeah.
So it's been a it's been a wild ride. We have, we own our own equipment, so we're going to try to get up there with the machines as soon as we can get a price that we can somewhere near live with. I mean, everything is just insane. I am being told that the price on pipes is going to stop start dropping. So.
I've heard that rumor too. I hope it's true.
I was gonna say, I hope it's not a rumor.
Well, I I guess I wasn't paying attention, but I had to buy some half-inch plywood a couple of months ago. It was like forty bucks a sheet, forty-five, and I was like, you're kidding me. There must be some mistake. And they said, oh, no.
Well, if it makes you feel any better, some places it's up to sixty.
It doesn't make me feel any better. I really don't enjoy other people's discomfort.
Yeah, we're it's it's it's. We build houses too, and.
Right.
We we could foundation sitting in the ground since last year, and we haven't been able to justify the cost of the material to start putting the houses up, so.
Okay. So anyway, you're if you're you're waiting to see if the product cost is going to go down, and if it if it doesn't, you'll you'll do what you can with your own crew, right?
Yeah, we're gonna bring our own crew in, and and we were talking today about instead of trying to buy from a local dealer for the pipe, we may try to order a really lot of materials so we could have it trucked in from out of, you know, out of this region. And.
No, that's a good idea.
Yeah, we're trying to locate someone online that will get us a good buy. And we've had pretty good success with that and some other things, going online and tracking down material you need. So we're trying to, we're not going to stop anything in either case till after Bike Week, which is just, you know, around the corner. But I would like to get rolling as soon as I can afterwards.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions by members of the board for Mr. Heavy? Regarding the Pine Hollow Campground? All right, well. Yes?
Sorry, can I ask a quick question? Um, is there only one entrance to the campground?
No, there's technically two. There's a an entrance going into the upper campground where the condominium association is.
Yes, that's what I saw.
Yeah, there's a gate there that you know, either side can get through it if they want to.
Okay.
It's more of an emergency issue, like if the fire department, well, they'll just drive through it, I guess. But if someone like the fire department wants to get through there, more than capable of it. But we don't leave it wide open. Because it's, you know, we do try to control the flow of traffic in there.
Okay, so there's just that one.
There's, as I say, there's two, but there's we only leave one gate open.
Okay, that's what I was wondering where the other one was.
Yeah, it goes up to the other campground up above the condo association. It's all connected. That was at one time, it was one piece of property.
Okay, got you.
You can't see one of them, Stacy. It's behind the looney bin, so you can't actually see it easily.
Oh, I actually, that was the one I was thinking of.
And there's the one down a little bit lower. Just beyond all the buildings on the left, you'll it sits back a little ways, but you can see that one from the road just before a roller coaster.
Okay, got you. I didn't go far enough. Okay, thank you.
Good job, Stace. Any more questions? What's the board's pleasure? Shall we grant this gentleman his extension and what to what date, sir? A year from now?
A year would be great, so I'm not coming back again and when when I can't get all the material to finish the job.
Okay, well, maybe while we're doing the the roll call here, somebody can look up and tell us what the date is for the June Planning Board meeting next year. So we'll do it to a date certain.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, do we need to hear from the staff on this or not?
Sure. June 7th, did you say, Kalina?
June 7th.
Does staff have a recommendation on this one? Sorry?
No, yeah, no, we're okay with the extension for one year.
Okay. I figured you'd tell us otherwise. All right, may we have a roll call, please? This is to extend it until June 7th, 2022.
Can we have a motion first?
I'll make the motion on that.
Sorry, yeah.
To extend PL two zero one nine dash zero zero six nine S extends until June 7th, 2022.
Motion by Chief Biati.
Second.
Second from Sarah Jenna. Any discussion? May we have a roll call, please?
Bruce Chaney.
Yes.
Charlie Sinclair.
Yes.
Sarah Jenna.
Yes.
Kirk Biati.
Yes.
Rich McNeil.
Yes.
Brett Bellevue.
Yes.
Susan Hodgkins.
Yes.
Peter Burnett.
Yes. Okay, sir. Thank you. Good luck. I hope that I hope the the you can good luck finding us some materials here. And.
Thank you very much.
Well, you're very welcome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Bye.
All right, seven point two PL twenty nineteen zero zero nine SP Endicott Street East MBL. One eighty-seven seventy-two seven. It's Endicott Street East Solar. Request to extend the approval to install a solar garden on city property. Do we have a representative of the? What is it called? NSSG Laconia One Solar LLC.
Good evening. My name is Michael Redding. I'm here from New England Solar Garden.
Good evening, Michael. So I'm looking at your application here for an extension. How much more time do you think you'll need?
We're gonna request another about another year till about December of 2022. What we're at this point, we have good indication that the governor will pass a municipal bill that will allow us to build this project to the capacity that both us and the city would like to build it to, which is the two point eight megawatts. We need that bill to be able to do it to that size. So at this point, it looks like the Republicans are willing to support it. So we feel confident that we could get it going by next year.
Yeah, you're not going to get it unless the Republicans support it with the current configuration down Concord. So does it matter that it's on municipal property? You made that distinction. Are they carving out an exception to the net metering limit for municipalities or something?
That's correct. Yep. So municipalities can move forward with a project under a net energy or net metering bill billing program, and they can sell that power to be able to offset their electricity costs and be able to gain some benefit by putting renewable energy on the grid. The other option that they also have is they could choose to go enter into what they're calling a community choice aggregation program, which allows the city to broker all of its residential, as well as the city entity electric usage and go out for to the market to get a cheaper rate. One of the criterias that you can make with that kind of brokering is to be renewable or use renewable energy. And so it allows us then to offer the electricity that we would be generating here back to the city as a direct benefit or at subsidiaries like a school or something like that. So both of those elements of that bill provide us with some strength that would allow us to really move forward with a project like this.
So what I don't understand, well, maybe I do understand. I don't want to oversimplify a problem here, but my assumption is that the forces that are against expanding these net metering limits would be the the power utilities, right?
The utilities have have made it a little bit difficult, yes, because of, yeah, for lots of different reasons, certainly. Yeah, it's been difficult to overcome some of that pressure.
Yeah. Well, I wish you the best with this. I think this is is a win-win for the city. What specifically, what conditions are you looking to change? Is it just the bill? Or and if the bill passes and survives the and signed by the governor, how soon would you be able to start work?
So if if everything goes good this summer and the legislation is ready to go, I would think that we'd be able to start construction sometime April or May of 2022.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions? For the applicant? Okay, what's the staff recommendation here?
We'd like to see this extended, please.
Yeah. Okay, that sounds like reasonable thing to do. Could we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to extend application PL two zero one nine dash zero zero nine two SP.
Motion made by Ms. Jenna. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Bellevue. Any further discussion?
What are we using for an extension date? He requested the end of 2022. What are we using for a date?
End of 2022? No, he said April or May. That's a good point.
Could only do one year, sorry. So it'd be June 7th.
Dean, Dean, let me ask you a question on that. According to the application here, their current permit ends August 3rd. Can we extend it one year from the current completion date to make it August 3rd, 2022?
Be August 2nd, but yeah.
Yes.
Now, is that acceptable to the maker of the motion and the second?
Yes.
Yes.
That is, is it acceptable to the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is to extend the approval to August?
Second.
Second, 2022? All right. May we have the roll call, please?
Bruce Chaney.
Yes.
Charlie Sinclair.
Yes.
Sarah Jenna.
Yes.
Kirk Biati.
Yes.
Rich McNeil.
Yes.
Brett Bellevue.
Yes.
Susan Hodgkins.
Yes.
Stacy Susie.
Yes.
Peter Burnett.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on the agenda is expansion of the historic overlay district in the downtown area. Where are we at with this one, Dean?
As you know, we had a little technical procedural mistake since the last time that we talked about this. The notifications have been sent out. The public hearing has been duly published and notified in the usual places, so we are still, from a staff standpoint and from the historic district commission standpoint, we are still advocating for the expansion.
Okay. Hang on a second. We got something in the mail on this one for the board, didn't we? Let me see here. Oh, yes. Yes, we have an email in opposition, so we have to have another public hearing tonight, I believe, the issue being the a recommendation of the city council regarding the expansion of the zone. So I will open the public hearing now at six fifty-one PM. Are there any members of the public present, either in person or electronically, that wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Bree Neal. I own polished and proper barber shop and shave parlor in Main Street Laconia.
Good evening.
Good evening. Forgive me, this is a little weird. I have not been to a hybrid meeting.
Well, we're here.
Yeah.
So I would like to speak concerning the expansion of the historic district. Specifically, my opposition to it. I have a few different reasons why. First, I don't find it to be an emotional situation where I feel as though my business being attacked by expanding this extra level of approvals that businesses would have to go through when you extend it to include all of downtown as we see it. But what I do see is the expansion is well-intended, but I don't find it to be practical in the long term. Specifically because not that long ago, the planning board made a great decision to unify the zoning in downtown to make it more business-friendly. It's less of a roadmap that you need in order to decide what kind of signage that you're approved to do and whatnot. There were something like eight different zones in downtown prior to that. Making that decision, it definitely put you on the path to helping businesses open, which we have seen moving forward along with the Colonial Theater Project. With that one step forward, why would you then do two steps back by adding another layer of approvals when it comes to facades and signage? In addition to the size of the expansion being I think excessive in the number of buildings that I think can be easily argued lack historic significance. And then I have a personal, I guess, problem with a commission having enough authority to decide what a business or building owner can do with their property to the extent that the historic overlay will allow. Because when reading what they are allowed to do within the district that they have, which I can understand the argument of them having that, given that the buildings are on the historic registry. The vast majority of the four buildings in that overlay are very old stonework and have great significance to Laconia. I don't argue that at all, and I think that's great. But the vast majority of buildings in downtown do not have that designation. And I would argue shouldn't necessarily. And at the cusp of the revitalization getting to a major milestone this year with the opening of the Colonial and lots of businesses starting to open to support that, I think it is a poor decision to expand the district now especially. But even so, ten to twenty years down the line, when the well-intentioned people are no longer sitting on that commission, when you have different butts in the chairs, when you have a different council, I have to think of, is it okay for them to have that much power in the long term? I don't think that risk is worth taking. I think that in the last eight to ten years, downtown as privately owned businesses working within the city's current limitations have done very well, and we've been grinding and grinding for years, and we've made it this far. I think you should continue to let it go the way it's been going. Continue to let it grow. Thank you.
May I ask you a question? Mr. Chair, may I ask you a question? He's muted.
Yes, of course, Charlie.
Okay, thank you. I'm just I'm trying to, I'm trying to look at it from from the statement you made, but I'm I don't know how this would, this overlay would hinder hinder business that are doing business in a building that they don't own. And the property owners, I can understand, might have a question or two because it's their property that's being affected by this. But the the way that this this procedure, this proposal has been written is that it's really for the historical district to work with the building owners, not prohibit them from doing things. But I'll take an example for the Trinity School over there, which this has happened without this zone being put into effect yet. But that the person that's bought that property is well aware of what the historical overlay commission is trying to achieve, and that is to preserve the outside, as you said, facade of these buildings and not have them just taken down to destroy the the historical importance of that building, which has been. And to be fair to a lot of us that have been here for most of our lives, we saw what happened in the city without any type of controls. And so we're concerned about that. The commission is concerned about that. Then I, again, I'll go back to the Trinity School. They're gonna make some major improvements and changes to the inside of that building and even the outside, but he's he's what's the word? I'm trying to think of was he's he's understanding what the what the what the request is to for the front of that building and the sides of it. And and I commend him for that to doing that. But that's that won't always be the case without something like a historical district in in effect. And when you say ten to twenty years down the road, you're right about the colonial. Now there's more interest in the city, and now a lot of us think this is the time to have something like this in effect. Because right now, there is nothing. And so if this gentleman over here at the school had wanted to just wave everybody off, say, well, you know, I bought the building. I'm gonna do what I want to it, and I really don't care what we care about, the citizens in this area care about the front of that building or the look of it. There's nothing for them to be guided with or by from other people. And as far as ten or twenty years down the road, I'm asking you questions along with.
I'm waiting.
Okay, thank you.
We're all waiting.
That was a cheap shot. I'm kidding. So by, you know, ten or twenty years down the road, don't you think that another council or another group of people could say, you know what, we want to revisit this, and maybe we're gonna vote to change it? Don't you think they could do that?
All right, so there's a lot to unpack in what you said. First.
Thank you.
When it comes to. when it comes to a business rather than a building or property owner in downtown, I will give you an example. The way that the historic overlay district regulation is currently written. If I opened my barber shop after this overlay is passed, I would not only have to go through the normal sign permit, actually. Correct this. I don't have a sign on my business, and there is a number of different reasons why, but we could add this to why, because that is another level of approval that you'd have to go through as a business in order to apply signage to that building because it is part of the facade. In addition to that.
Right now, you have to do that, don't you, through the city? You have to do that right now.
Why?
If you're gonna put a sign out in front of your building, an overlay, hanging sign or something.
Well, you have to get, you have to fill out your sign permit and
Right.
do that, yes. But in addition to going to the historic overlay commission and getting approval from them as well. So that's another step that you have to go through in addition to a lengthy sign permit application. And, you know, paying your fees, so that's already one's extra step to turn, especially for a first-time business owner who's never dealt with city government before, right? Already kind of scary. Two, my business happens to be a barber shop who has, my profession has the luxury of having a universal symbol that is also exempt from the sign ordinance, right?
Beautiful.
Great. However, the historic overlay regulation, the way that it is written, it specifies which ones are exempt from needing their approval, and that is not one of them. So I would still, with my barber pole, have to go to them for approval. I consider that to be excessive. On top of that, trying to remember everything you said.
I talked about, I talked, I, thank you. I talked about the facade.
When it comes to the facades in the school, as well as other buildings downtown, I consider it to be a much better outcome if the historic commission could offer positive reinforcement or incentives to get businesses and building owners to work with them to achieve a common goal rather than sitting in judgment perceived. Going yay or nay, we like or we don't like your idea, it doesn't fit our vision of what downtown is or our vision of what that building means. But that's subjective on who's on the board. It's subjective with, you know, who's on the board ten, twenty years from now, who's asking the same question, and they may not jive over the years. That's my concern when ultimately it's that person's building. So I prefer, you know, tax exemptions or breaks or grant programs to have it be more of a conversation and less of a asking for permission and saying yay or nay.
I didn't, I didn't take it to be like that when the, when the board discussed it, that it was gonna be an asking permission. You hit the nail right on the head from the discussion the board had, is that they want to work with business owners or property owners and, and just say, hey, here's a lot of this stuff, let's, you know, work together.
That's not how it's written.
Well, I, I, I don't know, and
Because what's in black and white is all that matters.
Yeah. Well, I, I haven't seen that part that, that states that, but you know, my, my impression is and my, what I've seen, and Dean, I would look to you because I don't see anybody else here from the from the group, so you know, I would look to you to say, is, is that the right impression or the wrong impression?
I think, excuse me, I think you can you can make the argument either way. It, it, it is true that the personality of the board
Of course.
is, and that's true of all of our boards.
Including our council.
Right, including the council, but the personality and the personal philosophies of, of individual board members does drive the, those decisions and I, but I, I will say that the current historic district commission is very cognizant of the fact that they want to work with people as opposed to be regulatory.
I certainly appreciate that. However, as a business owner, we're constantly looking forward on, you know, anticipating trends and changes in the market. And I consider the, the possible worst-case scenario of the people sitting, because it has happened in council, and we have regretted decisions that have been made in the city when it comes to the development of downtown and other areas of the city. So to think that it's not going to happen in the future, I think is a bit short-sighted. I think learning from our history that some of the worst mistakes were conjunction of private and public partnership that nobody can forget. But we want to move forward from that, and I think it's, it's far better left to the, the private owners who have put in their money and their time in their buildings and in their businesses.
I would just end by saying that, thank you, Mr. Chair, that unfortunately, we, we, as citizens, have seen the results of some of the property owners who, after they bought the property, just look at everybody, say, well, tough being you because we own it, we're gonna do what we want. And that's, that's what we're trying to not have happen when you've got people that come in who really don't care about the history of Laconia or what it looks like or anything else. Their attitude is, hey, I own it and I'm gonna do what I want, and with all, with all the rules we have in Laconia right now, we don't have the rules in place that can prevent some of our historical buildings from being decimated just because of the, because of the dollar. Or because I bought it, I had the money to buy it, I'm gonna do what I want. So I think, I understand, I definitely understand we are coming from Bree, but we gotta, in my opinion, and, and on the, on the the commission is that something has to be done sooner than later. And I wish that, you know, you have issue, not issues, but your concern is what the future might bring for the new members of that commission. But my, my concern, and I, and I think I speak for the rest of the, of the commission, is that our concern is now, not ten years from now. We've got, again, a theater that all this money's been put into. Right now, that's not even in, not even in this zone. So who's to say what could happen down the road? We could have the right council here, different people now, and somebody could say, hey, I'll give the city $20 million for that piece of property. And the council might say, wow, okay, we'll do it. And then what, you know? So these are just things that we're thinking about when, when you talk about the future.
And I can appreciate that you now can have empathy for the people who sat on city council when urban renewal was made.
When it was what?
When it was, urban renewal was made, because that's also their concerns.
Yeah. I know.
Thank you, Charlie. Are there any other board members that have questions?
Or comments?
There's not much time left because Charlie, of course, has used it all, but okay. Are there any other members of the public or butters that wish to be heard? Rob, do we have anybody in the queue?
Yes, one person has just raised their hand.
Okey-dokey. Who do we have on the line here?
Good evening, John Moriarty.
Oh, good evening, John Moriarty.
I'm glad you can hear me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. What have you to say?
Well, I, I want to first say thank you to all of you for, for being here and, and I'm just gonna toss this out this year because it's germane to my, my comments tonight in opposition to the expansion of the historic districts, but I did want to say thank you to you for being all members of the planning board. It's tough work, and I recognize that. My father was, I think, a twenty-year veteran of the planning board in Meredith, and in fact, wrote the shoreline ordinance that has become the shoreline ordinance for the state while he was a member of the board. So I, I know how much work and how hard it is and how hard your decisions are, so thank you for being willing to serve, all of you. My, my opposition to the historic overlay district, I suppose, comes in, in many forms and and from many experiences. I'm primarily speaking tonight as a landowner in downtown. In 2011, when downtown had a sixty percent vacancy rate and the most recent effort to do something with the Colonial Theater had evaporated. We said, you know, we're going to put our money where our mouth is and show that we care and have faith and hope in downtown, and so we bought the old Sundial Shop building and renovated it, and we, we made the best decisions we could. I, I might also note that I'm, I'm coming at this as we, and, and that's, that's plural, obviously, but we were the winners of the very first Golden Hammer Award awarded in the city of Laconia. And that was a couple of decades earlier, so when we came at the Sundial Shop, it wasn't our first rodeo. We had an idea of what we wanted to accomplish economically for the city. We called it productive philanthropy and that we were really doing it for the city of Laconia and expected to get no actual business return out of it. And so far, that plan has worked. But we, 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 we took a big chance on that project. We have, I think, nine businesses on the ground floor of it, maybe another six businesses in the lower level. As it is, we're gonna lose one of our tenants because there isn't sufficient signage available on the building despite the fact we've got an enormous waiver, and yet I'd challenge any one of you to, to describe or think of or visualize a single sign that's on that building, so the restrictions that are currently in place are probably such that we're already going to lose a tenant to another municipality. And signage was actually the reason driving that, so just wanted to give you all that perspective and then to sort of continue that conversation by saying one of the hard questions that we had to wrestle with when we did this project was whether or not to restore the original yellow brick from the 1937 Art Deco that was on that building. And we, we got some estimates on it. We pulled off the barn board that was obfuscating what was underneath, and it was, it was a wreck. To, to bring that back would have been a $300,000 in, in masonry alone and probably not all that good-looking. So we went the cheap way. We only spent $110,000 on the brick facade. No, I'm not a fan of, you know, faux brick, if you will. I guess it's really a stucco product. Did it really preserve the monolithic aspect of the Art Deco? I suppose it did, but not as well. I don't know. You know, I can only listen to what comments were made at the first time the overlay district was talked about and whether or not some of the members would have allowed the railroad station to, to be done if it were under the current the current ordinance. And the answer was, I don't know. So when I, when I take that, that comment about the railroad station and apply it to the Sundial Shop, I have to say, boy, what would we have been allowed to do? How much latitude would we have been allowed to take? And would that project have happened? And I think that's an interesting thing to think about because that project was probably the catalyst for a lot of other projects that happened in downtown. And if you hadn't had that starting point, I don't know where you'd be today. So, you know, I, I hear what you're saying. I hear the concerns that you have. But I guess I have more faith in humanity and our citizenry than perhaps you do. And likewise, knowing, because, you know, we were all around sort of in the 1970s, late 1960s, when city council decided to endorse urban renewal, that an elected body is not, in fact, an insurance policy against bad judgment. No respect, disrespect meant to any of the councilors there, but they could have actually stopped urban renewal had they chose to, and they didn't. So again, I, I don't think we're getting the insurance that we think we are getting by having a historic overlay district. So we're getting none of the benefit, but we're getting all of the detriment. I guess that's my perspective. And then just one last thing, you know, I, I hear Representative Sinclair, what you're asking about property owners versus property users, and I, I don't know enough to say anything intelligently about this, but I'm gonna try to fumble my way through it. I guess, what was it, Old English law, when you bought a piece of property, the buyer and seller would walk the, the boundary line and pick up five sticks in the bundle of ownership, and those five sticks would be conveyed from seller to buyer. And one of those sticks was the right to use. And of course, when we lease our property, like I do, for example, to RE/MAX in downtown, I'm giving them one of those sticks, sort of selling or renting them one of those sticks, the sticks to use it. And so, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Sinclair, about, about it really is the landowners and not the users. The users actually pay the ultimate cost. Bree and, and her business, for example, are the users. They would be the ones that would have to suffer through architectural decisions, signage decisions, color schemes. You know, one of my tenants likes to use decorative flags. Would they be allowed? I, I, I do worry. I see the best in humanity and I fear the worst in decision-making, so for all of those reasons and the decades of experience that I have, I have to say, I'm, I'm really I'm really disappointed that we are here today. You know, I know we joked about it at the last planning board meeting that we talked about the historic overlay district. And the, the comment was made, well, if we, if we open the foothold for these four, four properties, the railroads, and by the way, I'm chairman of the library, Board of Trustees as well, you probably know, and was a big part of the, the renovation of that building. Both that building, and I believe the Colonial and eleven other buildings in downtown are on the Historic Register of National Places, National Register of Historic Places. It's, it's, it's not, it's hyperbole to say that we could lose those buildings or, you know, sell it for $20 million and maybe knock down. Federal government is not gonna allow that to happen. That, that is not a real concern, in my opinion. But anyway, I just, we just wanted to, to say that when the, the four properties, the library, the railroad station, the church and the, and the rectory were incorporated into the historic district, the comment was, well, if we, if we open the door to these four properties, it's just a matter of years before we come back for an expansion of the district, and you may want to go back and look at those records, but everyone who was proposing it said, oh, no, 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 we're happy, this is what we want to do, we won't, we won't come back seeking an expansion, and yet here we are. So again, my fear is that, you know, even if we expand it now geographically, there's still the risk that we will expand it functionally. It scares me. It really, it really scares me. So thank you for your time and listening to me. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Moriarty. Anyone but Charlie have a question for Mr. Moriarty?
I just have a statement. So I was part of the historic district commission. And we did start with those four buildings, but we always intended to let the historic district, once it was set up, for them to choose more buildings to add into it, so it was never going to just be four.
Fair enough.
Any other board members? Charlie?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. We'll give you
Thank you all.
Opportunity. Okay, are there any other members of the public that wish to be heard? We have quite a few attendees there on the if they're here for this one.
Hi, can you hear me? This is Tara Shore.
Hi, Tara Shore. How are you?
I'm great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for, thank you for joining us.
Absolutely. Thank you. I am the chair of the Historic District Commission, and I appreciate all of the thought and considerations happening this evening, especially from our downtown business owners and property owners. Appreciate that very much. I would like to just I, I want to back Sarah's comment to begin with that I don't believe John's comment was true. I, I don't think we ever said we would never come back. I don't think that was ever the intention. I think we can all be adults and, and agree that yeah, more than likely, we are gonna start looking at a larger district space as we move forward. So I don't think that was ever discussed in that manner. I would just like to reiterate, you know, you guys have heard us talk probably now, it's been a year and a half. And it's basically the same each time, but I'd like to reiterate. Currently, everyone's sitting on the district, and this is for Bree, I understand changes occur, obviously. Sometimes for the better, sometimes for the worse, and we certainly can't look into the future and, and figure it out ahead of time. We all just have to keep moving forward and doing the best that we possibly can. But the current district commission is very focused on working with our community business owners and property owners to create the best space possible for incoming businesses, incoming residents, incoming visitors, tourists, and create a space that works for everybody. And that is our intention moving forward with anything under the district, Historic District Commission, and any overlay areas that may be extended. And with that said, I think that we can agree that certainly things could change going forward with human beings on a council, on a board, on that certainly things could change going forward with human beings on a council, on a board, on a commission. That's always going to happen. But you could take it to the other side, whereas Bree is looking at more restrictions, more things of that nature. There's always that other side of the spectrum where you're looking at less restrictions and what occurs during that timeframe. So again, we are certainly looking at working and collaborating and, and together with our business owners and property owners to, to make it not, I can't say it's easier. I personally am not a business owner or property owner. I've not had to go in front of boards to get permits and things of that nature. I've been involved enough in the last couple of years with things of this nature to know that there's a lot of steps to go get the things that need to get taken care of. But I think this one is, it's an important one. It's the character of our city. And if we don't have character, if we don't have, if we don't keep who we are, what we've been, what we've been through, if we don't keep that story together in some way, we lose it. And it's never coming back. And we lose those stories forever and ever. And then we lose Laconia. What Laconia is and what it has been and what it's going to be. And I agree with Bree. Our downtown area is certainly growing fast and furious. Huge amount of new business owners down there. So excited to see that. I truly don't believe that the extension of a historic district is going to stop that. And that's a, I feel that personally. But I, I think that this city has seen a lot and has come through a lot. And I don't think this is really a bump in the road. I think this is an improvement moving forward for everyone involved. And again, we look forward to working with our business owners. We meet the last Wednesday of the month and we invite you to come learn more about us.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Shore?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Sinclair.
Thank you. What's with the Mr. Sinclair stuff? Charlie, thank you.
Charlie, come on Charlie.
Tara, if you could just, I just, because signs kept coming up in our previous discussions, can you just elaborate a little bit about what the districts, the, or the commission's thoughts are about the sign thing?
Yep.
Flags?
Yep. Yeah, I don't think we have anything in here about flags. I have been roaming, I have been scanning through. We, per view of commission, activity within the historic overlay district subject to review. So these are things subject to review. Signage is listed. And there are one, two, three, five exemptions from that. Typically temporary sign, signage on single family residences, signage placed on the inside of a building, that type of thing. Those are, so it's, it's signage. There is one more piece down here. I apologize, I'm scanning. But again, and I understand Bree's concerns for sure. And again, things certainly can change. But our intention upon writing this, and Sarah was certainly kind of part of that, so she can speak to this maybe. It is written with the intention that we're not seeing maybe a 90 foot, you know, neon sign on this, on the side of the Mason's, the Mason's building. So, you know, something appropriate. Not, not things that are, you know, obnoxiously large and taking up the entire side of the building. The other piece that is listed in here, elements of design, so some notification or notes on signs, proposed new signs or replacement signs should be consistent with the original architecture and be consistent with or complementary to the original time period. So that, again, that speaks to the side of the Mason's building and putting a, a 10 foot neon blinking sign on the side of it. So it's not all, it's not, it's not, I don't know how to explain it, but it's not, it's not complete. I know business owners who can say, of course, it's restrictive. In my mind, it's not restrictive. It's, we really just want to help our business owners and/or to assist in their building and how, you know, and to help us keep the character of our city intact.
So, so Tara, if I put a diner up, a stainless steel diner up, which we used to have in Laconia, a couple of them. We had Bill's Diner over here, which was a brick building. But I'm pretty sure Bill's Diner had a neon sign there that said Bill's Diner. And I don't remember if it flashed or not. I know there was a diner up here. Unis Diner, thank you. Unis Diner. They had neon signs. So caught my attention when you said neon sign. But if, if somebody had a diner and the, and it was a neon sign, it said diner or Eat It Joe's, which, which were quite prevalent back in you know, the 30s and 40s. That would be approvable, wouldn't it?
It's not that, I don't, and I can't speak for the entire, you know, it's a commission. We take votes, just like you guys. So you can't speak for everyone. But I can say that in that design, I think the commission would be looking at the size rather than that it's a neon sign. Do you understand where I'm going with that? So you put up a, a metal, whatever you just said, diner. And you have a sign that goes there. I, I don't know a lot about building, but my assumption would be that when a builder builds something, like Mr. Moriarty stated, they, they put their time and effort into making their building look appropriate and welcoming and good looking. I'm assuming they want people to come to it. As do we. We want people to come to your businesses. We want them to come into downtown. And we want the other businesses to be happy with who their next door neighbor is and what they're doing with their business and know that when the new guy moves in next door and he is, you know, a diner, that new leaf owners know that it's not going to be a nine foot blinking neon sign. It could be a neon sign, but it's not going to deter their business.
From next door. So so in other words, though, everything is in the, in the ordinance would not be black and white. So in other words, there would not be, I'm sorry, no neon, no red signs, no green signs. Everything would be just workable.
I don't think there's anything in here that is completely black and white. In fact, I can't, I don't, I mean, I guess maybe in planning stuff, there's probably some real black and white stuff, but I don't know that there's anything in here that's absolute black and white. I, I really don't.
Okay, well, that's, that's an important thing because I think a lot of people would be afraid of that. I certainly would. But I never was under that impression. And that's what the proposal was.
We really would love to, it's always been based in trying to maintain the character of our city and the story that we have here. And the more we take down and the more that we destroy, the more our story disappears. And so being able to do that and, and keep it in some tact is, is really how this started. And where we'd like to continue forward. It was never about stopping time or stopping business or stopping economy. That would be ridiculous.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie. Are there any other questions for Tara? All right. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Shore. Could we have whoever's up next? Please.
If anybody else wishes to speak, please raise your hand so I can easily identify you.
Just a technical question. Peter, do you have to read that email from the one business owner into record?
I was gonna do that, yeah. I'd probably do it at the end of the public hearing. Anybody else that would like to speak, any members of the public? I see a number of attendees on Zoom. Raise your hand if you would like to be acknowledged and we'll give you the mic.
Mr. Chair, nobody else has identified themselves that wishes to speak for Oregon's application.
Okay. Well, then in that case, I'm going to declare that public hearing closed at, it looks like 7:30 PM. Well,
Mr. Chairman, you need to read that letter.
What does staff have to say? Pardon me? Oh yeah, I'll read the letter now first, if you would like. Here it is. Here it is. It's actually, it's an email addressed to Dean Trefethan. Planning Department, Mr. Trefethan, I'm a business owner in downtown Laconia and a Ward Five constituent. I have a conflicting meeting tonight where I would be at the planning board meeting in person to object to the proposed expansion of the historic overlay district in downtown. I am not in favor of this expansion. Existing restrictions on development are sufficient. Adding historic overlay will only constrict continuing economic advancement in downtown. Please put my objection on record. Thank you sincerely, Melissa McCarthy. She's a proprietor of the studio that's located at 598 Main Street in downtown Laconia. Were there any other emails or messages or letters that we got on this one?
No.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I will yield the floor to our Director of Planning and Economic Development at this time.
So after the public, have you closed the public hearing, Peter?
I did close the public hearing at 7:30 PM.
So I think the board should deliberate and then make a decision.
Okay. So what is the pleasure of the board? The issue here is again, to make a recommendation to the city council to expand the historic overlay district as proposed. We can, we can get a motion and a second going and then we can have a discussion. How's that?
I'll, I'll make a motion, Peter.
Sure.
But I had to find it on the thing here. I want to, I want to make a motion that we approve the, I'm trying to find on my paperwork here. I want to make a motion that we approve the last motion we approved with regards to historical overlay being expanded to the request that came from the historical overlay commission or district commission. I just can't find it here if I need a number.
It's basically expansion of the historic overlay district in the downtown area.
Okay. So I'd, I'd make a motion that we approve that.
Okay. So we have a motion from Mr. Sinclair. Is there a second? Somebody seconded it, I think, as we were speaking at the same time. It sounded like Sarah. So, all right, discussion?
If I could.
One more time, Charlie.
Thank you. I know, I get, and I forget what I'm saying sometimes. It's awful.
Yeah, we don't have that luxury.
Yeah. I really, I really would like to emphasize again that the historical district overlay group commission has really put a lot of thought into this and, and they're all quite aware of the negative thoughts that would come from people that aren't quite aware of what the, what the commission's goals are here. It's not to impede businesses. It's not to impede property owners or people that are looking to buy business or property in, in the city of Laconia. It is to save the historical buildings that we have. And quite frankly, somebody could come into Laconia, not a bad thing, and decide to buy some property. And they may look at a building and think, well, this building is, you know, it's awful. What am I going to do with it? Probably just cheap it a tear it down and start over or something. And I think that the, the historical group is there to work with that, that property owner, a potential property owner, say, look, these are the things that you could do with that building from, you know, on the outside. We're here to, to help you, work with you to make this happen. It's, it's not, it's not a group that wants to tell you what kind of window fixtures you can put in your windows. It's not there to tell you even what color paint you can use. That's not the goal. The real goal is to preserve these buildings as much as possible to preserve the historical look of Laconia so that we don't become like the Linway in, in Lynn, Massachusetts. Or we don't, we, oh boy, we don't become like some towns have become. Let's look at Keene, New Hampshire. Let's look at Cocke, New Hampshire. They've been able to do an awful lot with their downtowns, with their main streets, preserving those buildings and keeping those buildings full, for the most part, and, and having turnover with new buyers that come in and say, geez, you know, I want to buy this buildings for sale. And, and they go on with that. They have regulations in those towns to protect those buildings. Certainly, I know we're not New York City. I know we're not Denver, Colorado, but those cities have the same type of districts with much more teeth to them than what's being proposed here. Which this, this group is just making a proposal for the council to take up to work with the buildings we have here in this zone that's being proposed. Keep them intact and just go on from there. I think it's a win-win situation for the city. And I'm not worried at all, being a business owner and, and having a building downtown, which would be in this zone. You know, I, my building's for sale. If I thought this was going to hurt the potential of my sale, I'd probably go, oh jeez, I don't want to do this. This might wipe out any potential buyers. On the contrary, I think this might encourage the right kind of buyer that will say, yeah, this, this is good. This, this downtown looks like it's going to be preserved as a downtown, a real main street with side streets and the mill and everything else here. And I'm all for it. So I think this is a good thing for the city. Will there be some bumps in the road? There's always bumps in the road. Will be there some personalities coming along that might try to take it further or something? It's possible. But I think other people prevail on that. So I, I don't see that this would be a harm to any of the present building owners. I think it's actually a good thing. I really do.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other members of the board wish to comment?
Yeah, if I could just make a couple of comments, Peter. First of all, I, I don't think that we are voting to approve this. I think we're voting to send it to the city council for approval. Correct?
Correct. Yes.
Because the motion that the motion was to approve it. Then just one, another comment that I want to make is when I look at, at the inclusions in here, and I know we can't do spot zoning, but one building in particular was brought up that's on the edge of it. So that wouldn't really be spot zoning so much as if we were excluding a parcel in the middle of the whole thing. But anyway, everything that is old is not historical. Okay. Some things that are old that are not historical are just ugly.
Like me.
And then, and, and myself. And the, the thing is, you know, I hear about, oh, this isn't really more restrictive. You know, we're trying to keep things from going downhill. But everyone that was saying that we're not taking away, if we do not approve this or the city council does not approve this, they are not taking anything away from what exists. And everybody that was talking about this and stressing it has sat there and given praise to the advancements and the development downtown. Well, that stuff has been happening as stuff exists right now. And if you think by adding another step to the process, it's not going to affect it. Yeah, you know, a property still might be sold or something, but it might be the question of being on the market for a year and a half instead of six months or something like that. It is just one more step. Instead of six months or something like that. It is just one more step. And if you are happy with the way things have been going downtown, I don't know why we want to change. We're not taking anything away. And from my experience, every time, no matter how hard you work to make a change. It's a hundred times harder to take that change back.
Well, well said. And to be clear, the, the commission's authority is advisory only. They have no plenary authority, right? They can't stop it. They're just adding a bureaucratic layer to the development potential. Is that a correct assessment of? I mean, this is a zoning map that we're changing. It's an overlay district. We're not changing the powers or the authority of the historic commission.
No, this, you're correct that this proposal does not change the powers of the historic district commission. It is just expanding the district. However, the, the commission does have some. Powers of enforcement. It's not, not strictly advisory.
Can they deny a demo?
Currently, that's not within their purview.
Okay, so what, what powers do they have? Can they require an applicant to change their elevations or their site plans?
In a broad sense, the answer is yes. In a absolute sense, the answer is no, and I know that's a crappy answer, but that's the reality of the situation. It's. But it's not, it's not advisory from a standpoint of like Conservation Commission is advisory to the, the planning board.
Right.
They, they do have some. Powers. You know, I don't have the ordinance right in front of me, so. A little bit of a loss here.
Well, I mean, I'm just trying to make the distinction that we're, all we're doing is expanding an existing overlay district. It's a, it's a subpart of the, of the zone. The downtown or the urban commercial zone. Mostly or all, I think, right? It's an overlay. Are there any other comments or questions from members of the board?
Peter, I just had, I just had something texted to me, to me and maybe Dean, this is with regards to demolition or renewal, removal.
Well, you want me to reopen the, the public hearing, Charlie?
Well, no, I'm reading this to you. I'm just going to read this to you. This is just.
No, 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 please don't read it.
Did you find it?
No. There's a motion made and seconded. The public hearing is closed.
It's not a public hearing. I just wanted to answer your question. I just wanted to answer your question to Dean, that's all.
Well, address your comments to Dean then, if they're your comments. I just.
No, I just, I just have the ordinance or the, what was written up. So I just gave it to Dean so he can.
Okay, I thought you said you, you had received a text message.
I just have a copy of it on my phone, that's all.
Misunderstood you. Okay. So is there any other questions or comments from members of the board regarding the motion that is pending? Well, since then, then may we have a roll call, please, Ms. Graham?
Bruce Chaney.
Obstain.
Charlie St. Clair.
Yes.
Sarah Jenna.
Yes.
Kirk Biati.
Yes.
Rich McNeil.
No.
Brett Bellevue.
No.
Susan Hodgkins.
Yes.
Stacy Susie.
No.
Peter Burnett.
Yes. Well, I've got five to four. I ran out of fingers.
Six to two, wasn't it?
Five, three.
Five, three. All right, so the motion carries the, the new overlay district will be recommended to the city council for further proceedings. And for the public hearings. Thank you all for your patience and your time and to members of the public that were participating and. And watching. All right, let me find my agenda here. Boy, you know, you're old when you see better without your glasses. Okay, PL 2021 dash zero zero four two SP. And zero zero four three SU. It's eight eight four eight 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 nine two eight White Oaks Road proposal for a boundary line adjustment between lot one and 1.1. And site plan improvements on lot two for the Innovation Center and Conference Center with related parking and drainage upgrades. Is the applicant present and wish to be heard?
You need to vote to accept this first, Peter.
Is it in order and ready for acceptance, Mr. Trifethan? All right, then I would entertain a motion to accept this application for consideration this evening.
I'll make a motion to accept application PL two zero two one dash zero zero four two SP. Zero zero four three SU eight eight four eight 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 nine two eight White Oaks Road.
All right, motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. May we have a roll call, please?
Bruce Chaney.
Yes.
Charlie St. Clair.
Yes.
Sarah Jenna.
Yes.
Kirk Biati.
Yes.
Rich McNeil.
Yes.
Brett Bellevue.
Yes.
Susan Hodgkins.
Yes.
Stacy Susie.
Yes.
Brett Bell, sorry, Peter Burnett.
Yes. Okay, the motion carries. Is there a, an applicant here this evening?
Yes, I am. This is John Roke with Roke Consulting. I believe. I believe Jude Hamel is on also. Rob, if you could let her in so she can speak also if she needs to, that would be great. Um, so.
Jude, hang on a second. I'm having a hard time getting that link to work for me. Is anyone else having that problem? All right, go ahead, John. I'm sorry. I'll, I'll muddle along.
You're good. I'm going to share my screen and bring up kind of the overall plan of things and then I'll kind of just run through all the different things we're looking at doing there. Great. Okay. So what we're looking at here is the, it's the existing and the proposed. So what exists right now is the farmhouse, which is a residential. Area of the, of the project. There's the barn and there's a little cottage out in this area, but. Down in this area, it's basically like a, there's a gravel parking area or grass parking area right here. What, what we're looking at doing in, in this portion of the site. Is improving the entrance way in, paving it, doing paved parking, connecting some of the trails into this area. We're going to demo the existing, there's an existing connector right now that is, is part of the residential structure. What we're looking at doing is demoing that existing connection in between the barn and the, and the house. And doing a brand new structure that ties in with the barn. And that, and that it's all like basically a learning center and this is, it's like an upgraded learning area that connects in with the commercial part of it or the, or the. Learning center of the Prescott Farms. Part of what we need to do with the lot line adjustment is, let me stop this for just a second and do a new one. Just so everybody sees what this looks like on the condominium plan. Right now, what you're seeing is the existing line comes down and it goes right along the line of what the connector in the barn is. So in order to take the connector away from the farmhouse and put it in with the, with the Prescott Farms and the Conservancy and the, and the barn. And make this all one learning center is we needed to adjust this, this condominium line to come down, go along the other side of the connector. And then back to the same spot. So that's, that's essentially the, the entire boundary line adjustment plan that we're, that we're looking at doing. Stop that and bring it back up again. The second part of what we're doing down in this area is we're, we're demoing the cottage that exists and we're going to do a new innovation center. Down, let me zoom this in a little bit. Yeah, that's actually better. You can see everything close up now.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Sorry about that. I should have done that right away. So right here, this is the existing connector that's going to be raised and re, and rebuilt. We've actually done structural borings in this area. We have everything all completely done. We did, we did a DHR review of the site. It's, it's not a historical. A historically significant structure that as it exists right now. So demoing it and rebuilding it is, is something that. Is pretty easily allowed to be done. The cottage is not historical anyway, so the new proposed building in this area is like a new innovation center classrooms. And what you're seeing down below here is there's a way, there's ways down to the bottom, that all the. All the equipment that they need for doing snow plowing and maintaining the fields and a lot of stuff. It's all going to be open garage bays down below this innovation center. So up above is going to be classrooms and learning areas and bathrooms. And down below is going to be storage, indoors heated storage for all of their equipment that they need to maintain the property. What we're looking at doing is probably going to do a new septic, local septic. To tie all of the, all the barn and exist, a new connector and the innovation center together. Down in this area, we're still, we've done some test pits surrounding the area where we have not done the official design yet. But there's going to be, there's going to be a new septic going down in this area. There's going to be a new well for the innovation center and there's an existing well up in this area right here. That feeds the existing, the, the residential, the residential portion. And I believe it actually feeds some of the barn and the connector right now, but. We may, we may continue to use that or if we need to switch it over, we have another well that we're going to be doing anyway. As you go this way in the project, there's, we're, we're going to improve the pathway up to. The existing environmental center. This building right here that I'm looking at, that I'm showing right here is existing right now. And there is a, like basically like a gravel, it's a gravel road that comes in right now, down, down right in this area. And kind of comes down to the environmental center, but it's only, it's only this portion of it, like right in this area and down to the environmental center. So what we're looking at doing is, and this is expanding the parking area, doing a, doing a new paved area and having expanded parking on the other side. And what you're looking at right here is some bus spaces. So when, when buses come, they have, they have a spot to sit over here. And phase two, we're, we're going to get, we're asking for the approval for this building. It's an expansion of a learning center that isn't necessarily going to happen in the next year or two. It might be more of a five or. Eight or 10 year plan, but we've discussed that with TRC and the staff and. We wanted, we wanted to include it in the approval that we're asking for this evening. That way we can, you know, do all the other work. You know, all the, all the improvements here for parking. I did a parking calculation and the parking spaces that we're proposing will. Take care of this future building expansion also when it happens. One of the things we're looking at doing, we're, we're trying to do everything environmentally friendly and creating like learning experiences whenever we can. So what you're looking at in this area, all the, all the drainage from this goes into a newly constructed gravel wetland detention pond system. So everything goes in, goes in and we, we put a gravel pathway that runs along the outside edge of it. We're going to probably put up like a plaque. Showing this is what, this is what this gravel wetland is and here's how it functions and some cross sections of it. So. People can, you know, see it in action. Like if there's, if there's a storm event, they'll see water in it and they'll know exactly how it's percolating through it and. Treating the water as it goes. So we're trying to make kind of a, a, a learning thing out of it. And we talked about this with the Conservation Commission. It's, it's a gravel wetland that will, you know, not necessarily turn into like a full, full wetland like you would encounter in the wild, but. Right now it's a, it's an open field, basically a mowed field. So it will definitely introduce some new function and some new opportunity for wildlife in this area also. In addition to treating all the stormwater from the new parking lot area. What you're seeing down here is these are gravel pathways that meander not straight up the hill, but this gives an opportunity for. Some handicap accessibility from the, from the bottom learning center to the upper learning center. So that, that's kind of what you're seeing in this meandering path. We're looking at doing. Different types of gardens and learning areas and sitting areas and things like that along the path and in these, in these little loops. As you're going up the hill. We tried to kind of create something where there's a retaining wall, a retaining wall above and below, and there's two reasons for that. There, there's some grade break that. There's some grade that we need to take up with the loop that we made with the roadway. Kind of forced the grade a little bit. So we tried to incorporate a natural area where there can be some chairs and seating and, you know, overlooks. Down to the lower part of the property with some retaining walls and a path running along through there. This is actually, this area is actually creating a natural little amphitheater. That we can set up, that they, that they can set up some, like a little stage if they need to in this area. And be able to have programs outdoors when the weather's good and. Gives better access and availability to the existing environmental center. The reason why this road is paved, paved back up to the top is there's going to be additional maintenance with the new, with the new parking lots that we're doing. So it just gives a good all season way of getting up and down between the two parts of the project. That does not exist right now. It, it, it's hard to, it would be hard to go back and forth with it as it exists right now. So. We're improving that whole area as well with the, with the proposal that we're looking at. The new, the new building in the future would have its own septic and well, it would be kind of its own standalone thing. The existing environmental center already has a well and a septic to service that. So that's all, that all kind of remains the same. We're just improving the access to it. And improving parking for basically all season parking for the, for that center. With stormwater, things, things that we also did is when we're, when we're discharging, we pushed all the stormwater into areas where it isn't going to. Effect any of the existing fields or, or gardens that are gardens that are already there. There were some nice, there were some important gardens right in this area below the, where the innovation center is going to be. So we. We actually sent the drainage out a little bit further and instead of doing like a big rip wrap, rip wrap opening. What we did is a stillings well and basically what that is, is a catch basin that has an open grate, has an open grate on top and the drainage comes into the bottom of it. It fills the, fills the catch basin up to the top and basically over tops into earth firm level spreader. So. Instead of laying it shoot out the bottom of the pipe, it, it has to go up and percolate up over the, over the top edge of it. Another way of. Doing something that can be, you know, innovative, innovative way of doing it that they can say, you know, show kids and. Say this is another way of, you know, doing stormwater and things like that. So. Trying to make everything, everything that we did, something that could teach another way of doing things. We did, we put together a landscape plan that is, that's part of the, the regular plan set. That show, that's. That show, that's uh, completely compliant with the city of Laconia standards. We're working on, uh, we're working on doing it. Uh, e- even more and more improvements to that all the time. So uh, what you have before you this evening is a completely compliant plan that you guys can approve and. Uh, we're just letting you know, it's actually going to be much nicer than that in the end. It's uh. Landscaping is a pretty important part of what they want to do for this whole project. Uh, we also had, you also have in your package, a completely compliant lighting plan. Uh, obviously the, the uh. Parking areas need to be lit for life safety uh, up, up in this area and the roadway out. And also down in this area. Uh, one of the things we're looking at trying to do is some wooden poles and, you know, it's all dark sky compliant lighting, but we're. Trying to pick fixtures and poles that are more natural looking than, you know, just the standard. Uh, you know, steel poles that you would see in a regular parking lot. And then along the pathways uh, going up, up to the top of the hill. Uh, there's going to be a lot of uh, low light, lower lights, uh, like pathway lights and uh, different ways of. Uh, trying to incorporate natural, natural lighting into that, that area as well. There is a proposed, there is an existing sign up in this area right now, but we're proposing to uh, improve that sign. What we're showing you, we're showing you this evening that there, that we're proposing an entrance sign there that, that, that actually I've been working with uh, Dean and Rob. That actually requires a separate process. I believe we need to go to Z B A for a portion of that approval. But I just wanted to make sure you got, the planning board saw that there, that what we were doing up in this area, that that was going to be improved. Uh, there's a little bit of a drainage problem that exists right now in this area that we're taking care of with the, with the new grading that we're doing. Uh, some of the grading down here goes and go, and actually gets shifted to the north. Uh, Prescott Farms owns uh. This parcel of land also, so we're basically shifting some of the water onto the parcel to the north, but that's theirs also. And uh, we're actually going to, we are improving the grading down around the corner into the ditch uh, to let everything go. And it actually comes back onto the property and into some catch basins on the property again down in this area. Just gets incorporated into the road. Road drainage. But uh, this, the, the drainage that puddles here once in a while will be taken care of with the, with the new grading that we're doing. I think that covers most of the things that we're looking at trying to do. Uh, like I said, Jude's on the, Jude's on the call as well and can definitely answer specific questions that you guys might have once we get into it. Of uh, you know, the purpose of all, you know, the purpose of all the improvements and uh, the kind of the long-term plan for the, for the uh, development.
Okay, Mr. Okey, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Okey? Yes, go ahead, Stacy.
Um, John, I was at the conservation meeting.
Yep.
And uh, the lighting stuck with me and I was just curious if. There was going to be the potential to shut it off. Um, if it proved to be too excessive.
Uh, yes, I mean, there, there's always, there's always that built into any lighting plan to be able to actually turn it off at any given time. I mean, uh, any. Any commercial, you know, development, uh, if, if it is. If there's a need to shut stuff off, um. We can definitely build that into it, yes.
Okay, I was just worried that there might be some complaints about light pollution, uh, because it is so dark up there.
Oh, yes, yep. Yeah, I mean, there, uh, obviously if there's like an evening program or something like that during the winter and, and the part, the parking lot would need to stay lit for that. But there, there's probably a way that we could uh, incorporate. A way of shutting off most of the lights that, that would, that are causing issues and uh, have just the bare, like the bare minimum uh, for life safety. Uh, that would need to be, need to be lit, so.
If I can just jump in here, I, I, um, Susie. We often run uh, evening programs that rely on a dark night sky. Uh, moonlit programs and programs that look at the stars, um, even fireflies. So we're not really interested in having it be too brightly lit either. Uh, we want to make sure everybody's safe, but we also want people to be able to use their night vision to experience Prescott Farm um, at its best. So.
Is this uh, Jude, Jude Hamel who's speaking?
Yes, this is Jude Hamel.
Oh, hi, welcome. Okay. No problem. Uh. John, can you explain uh, the condominium to me? The applicant. Is listed on our paperwork as uh, Jude and Bruce.
Yep.
Where's the conservancy fit in this?
Uh, Jude, Jude is listed as, as the, she basically represents the conservancy on the application. Uh, hold on here, let me stop this share. Go back to the condominium plan.
I'm looking at the um, the staff review. Report. That's where I was basing my question on.
Yeah, so let me zoom in here. Uh, so right now, Bruce Pardo. Is, is the one that signed the application for basically the residential partial portion of the project. Like uh, unit, unit one is owned by, I, I, Jude, you have to.
Prescott Farm LLC.
Prescott Farm LLC, and that is the, that is the family farmhouse uh, that the Pardo's own. Uh, the Prescott Farm Conservancy, if that's right, owns the barn and unit two of the condominium. So Prescott Farms can, uh, Prescott Farms Conservancy signed the application for unit two and the part, uh, Bruce Pardo signed for unit one. And what we're doing is basically, like I said, we're adjusting it so that the conservancy takes over the connector portion. Of the, of the buildings.
All right, thank you, John. Yeah, are there any other questions for John or for Jude? For members of the board? Okay. Well, let's uh, open the public hearing. It's uh. Barely see eight. Looks like eight oh seven P M. Uh, are there any members of the public that wish to be heard, any butters?
Mr. Chair, nobody has identified themselves that they wish to speak for or against the application.
Okay, one more time, anybody else? That wishes to be heard regarding this. Boundary line adjustment and uh. And site plans, actually the two, right?
Yep, it's a boundary line adjustment. It's, it's two separate applications. I think you have to vote twice on it. But yeah, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to take care of everything all at once.
Okay. All right. Well, then I'll guess I'll close the public hearing then at uh, eight oh eight P M. And ask for the staff report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. There are in, they meet all the zoning requirements. Uh, as John mentioned, at some future date, they will be going uh, to the Z B A for a new sign. Uh, but that's uh, to be done in the future. Uh, staff recommends that the board grant the conditional approval. A couple of things that I want to point out to you. Uh, they have identified two phases to this project. The first phase. Is the parking lot and the items that they're doing down around the current barn. And then phase two is the, is the future building. Uh, we are recommending a two-year uh, approval uh, timeline. And if they uh, have not started the second phase by that point in time, they would have to come back for an extension, but it would be just for. Plan as, as, as approved, uh, as opposed to, it would be for the second phase as opposed to for the whole plan. And John, I have a question concerning the sewer line. I, I think we were under the impression that you were going to run a sewer line from the new building. Down to the septic, is that no longer the plan?
Uh, for, hold on here, let me start the share again. Oh, you disabled my screen sharing. I can bring that up again.
All right, you're fine.
Okay. Oh, uh, yeah. I need to open it again. Sorry. Okay. Yeah, everybody has that back up? Yes, uh, so what you're saying, from the innovation center, yeah, we're, we're bringing it, we're bringing it down across into there also. So we're, we're kind of veing everything down to this location, trying to get it, trying to get it there. That is correct.
Okay.
And then, and then up here, the, the, the phase two, that, that's a completely separate system up there, but yes.
Okay. All right, so the recommendation under number two is that the uh. At, at some point in time, we need to know where the sewer line is, so that'll need to be shown and planned, but.
Yep, yeah, we're, we're going to do, we'll do a full, we'll do a design on it that we're going to submit to D E S for approval and we just, we just got to. Finalize test bits and, you know, get the, get the exact path of it worked out. So yes, we will do that.
You know, saw it, one typo on the um. Uh, plan reference box. Under title, it says condominium conversation plan. I think it's supposed to be conversion.
Oh, yes, definitely conversion.
I, yeah, and then sites, it's, it's correct underneath under sheet one, it's just.
Okay.
Yeah, because we had the conversation tonight, so.
Yes, we did.
Yeah. Um, okay, so what is the pleasure of the board regarding this? Um, boundary line adjustment and site plan improvements?
Okay, Peter, if I may, I am going to um. I'm going to assume that everyone's either on board or not on board for both of these. So I'm going to group them together. And I am going to move that we approve. Um, P L two zero two one dash zero zero four two S P and zero zero four three. S U, um, including the staff recommendations and including that. This will be a two-year approval. And if phase two is not started within that two years, they will have to come back. Um, to the planning board again.
Yep, or the, just for an extension, oh, sorry.
Motion made by Mr. Bellavoe. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Chief Biati. Did you want to add something, John?
Uh, only that it's basically guaranteed, we're going to be coming back for an extension on the phase two. Um, it, it, we talked to, we talked to Dean about it and we wanted to get the approval done. But it's not something that's going to happen within two years and probably not within five years. So. Um, I just want to make sure it's on record. I just want to make sure it's on record that we will be coming back and we'll be coming back more than once, so.
It's on record that it's guaranteed, John, and.
It's not happening.
Another pandemic or anything, you know?
No, it, uh, yeah.
How many guarantees did you give us in twenty nineteen?
Yeah, exactly, yes.
Right? No, I get you, I get it, yeah.
Yep, so that's fine.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, sensing none, I mean, we have a roll call, please.
Bruce Chaney.
Yes.
Charlie Sinclair.
Yes.
Mike Delavecchia.
Yes.
Sarah Jenna.
Yes.
Kirk Biati.
Yes.
Rich McNeil.
Yes.
Brett Bellavoe.
Yes.
Susan Hodgkins.
Yes.
Peter Burnett.
Yes. Well, the motion carries. Uh, good luck up there. I just want to add one little detail. Um. I have a book, it's one of my favorite books, uh, because I like old farmsteads. And the title of the book is Big House, Back House, Little House Barn. You're familiar with that one? So you're taking out either the back house or the middle house. I can't, I, I don't remember if the, if the front piece is actually got, if you have all four components there. But. Uh, I've always loved that farm, the way it was laid out. Um. It's outstanding.
And we're committed to maintaining the connected farm feel of it by, by rebuilding that connector so that it remains connected. Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, um.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you all. Yep, that was wonderful. We get back to my. Agenda here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Delavecchia has arrived. I don't know what.
Oh.
Decide on which uh. Alternate will make, remain on the board.
I, I could abstain.
Uh, well.
Let the alternate continue, that's all right.
Did you hear that, Peter? Uh, Mike, Mike will, will just be a commentator.
Can we do that? Can we do that?
Yes, we can.
Well, Mike, uh, there's a, uh, would you be willing to chair briefly during uh. The matter to which I must have um. Abstain?
Of course.
Because Ed's not, yeah, because Ed's not uh, here tonight. So we need somebody to, to share that presentation because I'll be recused. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. So I think in light of that, I'm going to seek him and I'm going to ask Susan to uh. Susan's can, you know, can continue to participate, but she can't vote. If that's okay? So that we have Mike in as a voting member.
Just in that application.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't, yes. All right, where are we? Weers Boulevard, eh? P L twenty twenty one dash zero zero four five S P. Zero zero four six S U. One zero nine Weers Boulevard, it's proposal to redevelop the property, uh. Waiver request for lighting and landscaping. And uh, is the applicant present and wish to be heard? Is the application? Ready for acceptance?
It is ready for acceptance.
All right, so we need a motion to accept the application then.
I'll make a motion to accept application P L two zero two one dash zero zero four five S P. Zero zero four six S U, one oh nine Weers Boulevard.
Motion by Ms. Susie, is there a second? Okay, motion made and seconded, we have a roll call, please.
Bruce Chaney.
Yes.
Charlie Sinclair.
Yes.
So is Mike voting or not? Mike Delavecchia.
That's it.
Sarah Jenna.
Yes.
Kirk Biati.
Yes.
Rich McNeil.
Yes.
Brett Bellavoe.
Yes.
Stacy Susie.
Yes.
Peter Burnett.
Yes. And in case I was mistaken, it's because I wasn't looking at the actual video. So I'm, whoever made the motion, the motion carries, so. Um. Let's see here. Is the applicant ready to go? As I open this up.
All set, Mr. Chair. Uh, my name is John Cronin. Uh, I'm representing the applicant this evening, uh, with me here in the.
Good evening.
Good evening, a long time no see, hope all is well. But uh.
So far, so good.
Uh, John Bisson, uh, my colleague is who handled the technical review, uh, meetings is in the office with me. Also, uh, should be on the line is Pete Graniere, Tony Dion. And Chris Squida, the, the engineer that worked on the project and took it through T R C. So they may be able to. Handle some of the questions. Uh, this project that's before you involves two lots. Small lot along the water where it's improved with some docks. And on the opposite side of Weers Boulevard, there's an existing cottage colony that I'm sure you're all familiar with. Uh, that's uh, currently depicted on the plan that I see some of you have in front of you and are reviewing. Uh, basically the goal here is to realign, repurpose and improve. Uh, these buildings generally on their same footprints. Uh, when we initially met with T R C, uh, they had some very good comments with respect to setbacks. If you take a look at uh, these buildings which are uh, up on the north side at nine, ten and eleven. You can see the existing gray boxes where those are going to be moved. Uh, the original footprints of them, you can see they sat within the setback and up against the property line. Uh, those three on that side. Uh, during the T R C meetings, uh, there was a request that those be moved forward and made more compliant. Or more conforming, if you will, with uh, the ordinance. So this plan proposes to do that. Uh, get them compliant with the setback on that side. Also, uh, you will see there's an additional building twelve, which sits on the south side. Also fits within the setback. Also, you will see there's an additional building 12, which sits on the south side, also fits within the setback. There'll be nothing really changed over on the water side, that will remain with the exception, there's a picnic area there to be constructed with a pervious three-quarter crushed stone base to allow people to get some R and R while they're heading over to the docks, using their boats and want to enjoy the water. The applicants here have had great success with taking some of these cottages and redoing them to more modern standards. They've got a project over in the Moulton Borough, Center Harbor line, that was really welcomed by the market, and people have been lining up to try and acquire them. It gives something a little bit different what's out there. It's not gonna be just an old cottage with some new paint and some new color, but it will also provide, you know, more modern conveniences and nice finishes on the inside. With respect to the utilities, there will be municipal water and sewer here servicing the site, which also makes it more convenient and can adequately handle the density which is compliant with the ordinance. You'll see the parking is being realigned to make it more convenient and also to provide the required number of spaces and to get some handicapped spaces in place. There were some discussions again in the TRC process with respect to lighting, where this is a pre-existing use, so basically they're gonna keep it as is, but there was a request with the existing lights on the building. I believe some of them are widely broadcasted spots, and we heard, I believe, in one of the prior applications, some of the concerns with night sky and various light pollution issues. So the applicant has agreed to take and replace those fixtures with down cutoff lights so that it will avoid the broadcast out into the street and throughout the property. So it will provide safe lighting access in and out of the doors, but it won't mander beyond the property lines, which was desired. Likewise, where it's existing, there will be some landscaping improvements, but they did seek a waiver with respect to doing a lighting and a landscaping plan because of its prior non-conforming use of the facility. With respect to the overall layout, you can see that the handicap spaces are in front and are established in such a way to make it convenient, and in the middle of the site is the existing house, which will remain. The bottom area of that will be used for some storage for the site and for some mechanicals, and the upstairs will be living space. That's pretty much it as proposed, and like we say, it's taking existing use and improving it. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have, and if need be, I can defer to some of the other experts that are on the line with us.
Alright, thank you very much, any, any questions for the applicant from members of the board? Alright, I guess that would be a no. So, we're gonna open a public hearing, then, it looks like it's about 8:23 PM. Are there any members of the public or abutters that wish to be heard? Mr. Morrow, is there anyone in the queue or in the room? Oh, I see someone approaching the podium. Hello?
Hi, I'm Donna England, I live at 98 Pogus Park Road, which is right across the water from this development here.
Pogus Park, yes, yeah.
Questions and concerns, I am friends with the La Valleys and I'm just helping them out here.
Sure.
Well, thanks. We noticed that there is another building that is not where the other buildings were, and they have concerns about that being close to their existing home, which is on the lot next door. It also looks like all these other buildings have increased in size from what the original buildings are on that lot. Is that correct?
Mr. Cronin, do you want to take that? You're muted.
Thank you. Muted, muted, I get it. Yeah, with respect to the footprints, some of the sizes have been realigned and they are a little bit larger in some cases, but they do meet the density requirements, so there was a calculation that Mr. Guida and staff did during the analysis to make sure that it was compliant.
So, the other question I have is, how many stories are these homes gonna be, these condos?
There'll be one and a half stories, be very similar to the ones in Moulton Borough.
So how many feet would that be?
Square feet?
No, height.
Height.
It will meet the height requirements of the ordinance, I can defer to Mr. Grenier who's on the line, he can give us the exact number.
Mr. Grenier, are you with us? There you go.
Yeah, I am here, so the height should be a story and a half, each story is about eight, eight or nine feet, and we should be somewhere between the 16, 17-foot mark upon completion.
Okay, the other thing, is it gonna be built on a slab, or is it gonna be a foundation?
They're gonna be built on piers.
On here, so it's gonna be elevated from the ground?
Yes, it will be about one foot, yep.
Okay, so I also noticed there's 27 parking spaces, that's a lot more and a lot more asphalt than what's originally there. So my concern is, in the La Valleys is, what about the runoff? That runoff is gonna go right onto the Boulevard, and whatever goes from there will end up in the lake.
I believe that would be for Chris Guida, the engineer. Is Chris with us, or?
Yep. One second.
I see a Chris Dupree. Oh.
Oh. Good evening, my name's Chris Guida with Field Stone Land Consultants, and I'm a wetland and soil scientist. I'm working with this project along with our engineers. The pavement, there's a fair amount of pavement that there's already, there was a couple of plans, existing conditions as well as proposed. So that whole area was paved already, it's in severe disrepair. So basically, in order to even have something feasible and safe, that pavement is getting basically dug up and, you know, reclaimed and then new pavement being put down. As far as the parking spaces, again, we're given the opportunity to improve the property and meet the regulations of the town to the best extent possible. Before, there was very little parking spaces, if any, so as far as safety goes, and even, you know, getting around the property. So, and we're trying to improve that, as far as the impervious areas, it still remains very similar to what it was before, there is a grassed area in between the existing buildings and all the cabins, and there's also grass area, you know, between that pavement and the lake, so. Everything, when it gets regraded, will basically pitch towards the center area, so that it's not gonna run down, you know, out into the lake, and all that area between that pavement is going to also remain vegetated and trees there, I believe there's a, there's a few large ones that may need to come down, but I believe the city is interested in keeping some of those trees as far as a buffer along the, along the area, so. We're not going to see basically, you know, runoff.
I have seen, I have seen in between each one of those cottages right now, they park on grass. There's no, like, parking area, so I see right now, just looking very quickly, over a dozen additional paved areas that are nonexistent right now.
Yeah, so, so one thing, basically what, the way the state basically interprets, you say grass, but what happens is when there's vehicles parking on there, it's essentially dirt and it gets packed down. Even gravel roads and driveways are considered impervious by the state. So although we're proposing to pave it, the state does allow to repave even gravel areas without, again, because they consider it impervious already. One of the benefits of having the pavement is actually you can direct the flow and you prevent having the runoff. You get these gravel roads, when you do get storm events, it does erode and that soil and everything goes into the lake. When you have a pavement, you're not going to have erosion off that pavement, and you can channel that water so that it infiltrates properly on the site.
Okay, so still getting with the road, the driveway, the La Valleys were led to believe that the way it is now, you come in and you can drive behind all those units. They were led to believe that that was gonna end, that it wasn't gonna swing around and go behind there. And it also shows a proposed driveway.
That's false.
For them, where they should have been taking the existing driveway to get up to those additional units that are behind.
I'm not really sure what you're getting at, I'm not aware of there not being the continued use of the driveway around them, behind the cabins. I know that there, I believe there was a lot line adjustment done with the abutting property, and that's where that new proposed driveway was required as far as access those cabins in the back on the abutting property. And perhaps Mr. Grenier can address that, or Mr. Cronin.
Yeah, so when we purchased the property from the owner, we proposed to do a new driveway, which would eliminate them from using that circular drive. The circular drive will still remain on the cottage property, but they, it will not tie into the cottages that they own up on their property in the back. There, they will have a new driveway with their driveway connecting the bottom house to the top two units, all on their own property, not crossing over property lines, basically.
Where is the La Valleys property in relation to this, this site?
The La Valleys are, I believe, just south of us.
Yes, it would show, it shows south on the plan.
Okay. Alright, I understand.
So you can see the new driveway.
Out of this whole thing is that extra building, number 12.
Gonna block everything else off.
It's gonna block their view from their home.
Looked at.
Why can't they just use the existing footprint instead of adding one more building?
I just respond to that, for context, the La Valleys were the sellers of this property, and it was not an inexpensive property to purchase, and the purchase price was paid with the expectation of developing it. After the sale and the payment of the money, there was some requests for building limitations and some discussion about maybe price modification, that was not something that the La Valleys were willing to do. So when our TRC meetings, we were looking to develop the property to its highest and best use, and it was allowed to add an additional unit. There's no restrictions by easement covenant or otherwise that could have been crafted into the deal that would prevent that, and it's our view that it's consistent with the regulations.
How far is that building from the road?
I'll defer to Chris to scale that off.
Yeah, so it looks like it meets all the setbacks for one, and it's probably about 60, about 60 feet off of the road.
I mean, there's only two acres, and they're trying to put another building on two acres of land.
That's correct.
The other question.
Do you have any?
The other question is, um, is a well that.
They've been using since they bought the property, we're not supposed to use it.
It has not been disconnected, and they can't get anyone to disconnect it because they would have to go into that middle house, which is no longer theirs. So right now, they're using their well. And they have renters in that middle home.
We, we have no renters in there, but we can absolutely, you know, discontinue use of that water well, if that's a problem.
He said there's no one in there, and that they would.
Yes, there is, how, there's people living there. There is people living there every night, all week.
Oh, okay.
Workers, they come in on, at night, they leave in the morning early, they go away for the weekend, and they come back again, they've been there for a long time.
So we can absolutely discontinue that well use if that's, if that's their concern. We are actually putting in a new water line from the street anyways, so.
They're gonna be on City Water.
We are, yep.
Yep. Do you have any other questions, ladies?
They're not in City Water right now, they are not.
You're gonna put up a stockade fence between the two properties?
Yes, that's the proposal, is that there be a privacy fence.
And how high is this fence going to be?
I'm not sure if that's been determined yet, perhaps Mr. Grenier has some ideas on that.
So it's just gonna be a privacy fence to keep the property separated in that tight back corner, with thinking somewhere around, you know, maybe four feet or so, ju- just to mark the boundaries, that's all it is.
It's a six-foot fence.
Well, he said it was four, but a privacy fence is usually more like six, isn't it?
Six feet.
Yeah.
Does it, would that, would that block any lake views from the La Valley property?
Even at six feet, it shouldn't block any lake views because their houses are sitting up on a knoll.
No.
We're just using to determine the boundaries of the property, that's all. And it can be as low as four feet, if that's possible.
Okay. So they can go down to four feet, ma'am?
They can go to four feet, what were you told?
Six.
They were told six feet.
Well, we can tell them to make it no higher than four when, if we approve this. We can put it in as a condition of approval.
And they were also told it was gonna be a white vinyl six-foot fence.
What that?
Yes.
White vinyl six-foot fence.
If that's what they're looking for, we absolutely can do a six-foot white vinyl fence, that's fine with us.
No, I think she's saying they were told that's what you, your, oh, that's what the intended fence was going to be. You're saying, you're not, you do, do you know what materials the fence will be constructed of?
It will be vinyl, yes, it will be.
Okay.
But their main concern is that extra building.
Yeah, I don't like that building at all.
Please, well, all of a sudden, went out of the air, or they have to have this building, no, no. Probably cut the building somewhere, went out of the way, I don't know where them.
They weren't led to believe that there was gonna be an additional building. They were led to believe that they were gonna use the original footprints of each one of those cottages that's existing. They weren't gonna add another one.
Okay.
Those are, those are their concerns right now.
Alright, what conditions would you have us consider imposing or recommending on this?
Not to put that bill, that one building.
That building, I don't want that, I don't like.
So your objection is to the additional building?
Yes.
Primarily, okay. Alright. Any other questions for the applicant?
And I like.
From you guys?
Well, disconnected.
Mr. Chair, just so I'm clear.
We're getting into trouble, that's.
I think they've represented that they will disconnect the connection to the well.
Yes. Thank you.
Before you leave, you were discussing the height of the fence amongst yourselves, you prefer six foot.
Right.
Okay.
You'd rather have higher than lower?
Apparently, yes.
Alright.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify that, I thought I, I heard a lady say that she preferred to have the six-foot white vinyl fence, and if that is her preference, we're fine with that as a condition of approval.
Okay. Alright, good.
Peter, if I can, I have.
Peter, if I can, I have a question either for the applicant or the neighbor.
Certainly, Brett, go ahead.
I'm, I was just looking at the Google aerials and I'm not really sure how old they are on my phone. But it appears to me that the line of sight from the La Valley house to the proposed footprint of the additional house, if you continue the line of sight through that proposed house, in any direction, there are some pretty substantial trees that already exist there that would not allow for viewing of the water. Are those large trees still there along the road or have they been removed already?
So there are some trees along the road, but if you think about it, they're very tall pine. They're like ninety feet high. Trunks, it's not a wall, it's just a trunk so that they still have their view. But if there's a home placed at where number twelve is, that's gonna block their view. But there have been, there have been trees that have been cut down recently by the power company in the last few years. But there's a difference between a trunk of a tree and a wall of a house blocking their view.
Okay. Other, any other members of the public or any other questions for the applicant and the abutters?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make one comment. I believe earlier we mentioned, as Peter mentioned, as far as the slopes. The other houses on the La Valles property are approximately sixteen to eighteen feet above where that cabin would be in elevation, just ground elevation. So again, a finished, a finished floor or windows, you know, is gonna be another, you know, probably six feet above that. So I believe that their view would, would easily be over the top of that cabin in that position just by the, the existing topography.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions or any other members of the public or abutters wish to be heard? Anybody in the queue? Rob?
Mr. Chair, nobody from the online has indicated that they wish to speak for or against the application.
Okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing at eight forty-two. And we'll hear from the staff.
Our staff recommends the board grant the initial approval with the recommendations listed. We have a one-year completion date on this recommendation because it's our understanding that the applicant is ready to go and, and is going to make great progress here. Do want to point out that under condition number two, that there are trees along the road to be maintained as part of the street tree requirements. It doesn't mean that every tree needs to be maintained, but a significant number of them need to be maintained. At some point in time, we need to review the condominium documents. I'm gonna make sure that all utilities are placed underground and we will require as-bilts to show not only the location of the buildings, but all of the utilities. Waterworks has some standard recommendations concerning their utility. And the rest is the normal regulatory conditions.
Thank you. Could you, we possibly make the, uh, one of the conditions that the privacy fence be vinyl and six feet as the abutters had requested?
Yeah, we make that two E.
Okay. Alright. Any other conditions that we might?
I have a
Sure, Charlie, go ahead.
I, we haven't, I haven't heard sidewalks mentioned. Is there gonna be a sidewalk put in here?
No.
Because?
It's not a new subdivision. There's no requirement. There's not, it's not a new sub, you're not creating a new lot or a new subdivision. This lot exists already.
So there's no requirement? They're, they're, they're going to be doing extensive redevelopment? There's no, they don't need to get a waiver?
No, it's one lot now and it will be one lot when they're done.
Okay.
I, I agree with the chair. I mean, I, I, and I know, I know we can't change rules, but that, wow. So, um, I have a couple of questions. One, there's definitely gonna be more pavement there and I'm, I'm, I don't know what the state says about dirt and stuff like that, but you know, if, we get some pretty hard rains around here now. And if we're increasing the pavement, it's just gonna mean the potential for a lot of runoff there. And it will go onto the boulevard, cause flooding. We see that up, even up by the summit. And there's a lot of, lot of runoff there from high up. So if we're, and that's a lot of dirt up in there. And so if we're gonna have more pavement there, I, I think there needs to be some sort of precaution to try to mitigate that water from going out into the boulevard and then going right down into the water. I really do, Dean. I, I think that that's something to look at. If the pavement's in disrepair now, that means there's cracks in the pavement that suck up the, suck up the water. And if they're gonna improve that, and I totally understand that, 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 that's a potential problem for sure there. And then the other, I understand the, the, the buyer, the developer of the, of the property wants to get as much out of it as they can. That's, that's good business. It makes sense. But I also think that, I also understand that the next door and now neighbors to that property have a concern about their view being blocked by this added building down there. And, um, you know, if you're looking off to the right of that property and you've got this, I'm not sure how this story and a half thing works out. And if it's on something underneath, it's gonna lift it even higher for an elevation. How exactly that works? And, and I, I think that's a potential problem there. And I don't know what the, what the answer is, but I'm not in favor of this with that, with that building being there. And I, I wanna believe everybody, but, uh, you know, the property owner next door now who sold the property is indicating that that was not part of the, part of the plan that they discussed. And I realize unless they have something in writing, I don't know what good I said, they said, whatever. I don't know how that works. But I, I can totally understand saying, oh, wait a minute, that wasn't, I'm gonna lose my view. Why would I agree to that to begin with if I knew about it? That, that doesn't make any sense to me. So I, I personally have some issues with that. I, I don't think that's right.
I, I understand what you're saying about the pavement. I mean, the statement that was made earlier by the representative of, of the developer that the current parking areas are considered, you know, impervious now. And there really is not significant change between a compacted, even though the grass may grow there, a compacted area of, I mean, these cottages have been there for a long time. So the, the dirt where the cars park has definitely been compacted. There's very little difference between that and, and pavement. DPW is part of Technical Review Committee, as you know, and they have reviewed these plans and they did not raise the issue of stormwater runoff. I mean, that's just a consideration point. The additional cottage is within their right to build on this property from a density standpoint. Whether there's any agreement between the, the developer and the previous owners, I'm not aware of any and that's not necessarily germane to our decision-making. That's a civil matter. And, you know, that they'll do what they feel they need to do. In terms of the height of that additional cottage to the, the buildings to the rear, there is, just in, as, as was mentioned, just in ground level, there's a sixteen-foot difference in, in height. And, and then you've got the structure itself. So anybody on a porch or, uh, looking out a window is, is, is three or four more feet higher than that easily. And if, if the structure is going to be sixteen to seventeen feet to its peak, you're, you're, you're at that vision level or you're above it, you know. As, as to the, the main house that's nearest, nearest the road, I, I mean, I'm not sure what the view is, but the logical view to me is straight across the road to the lake. And I, and I realize that, you know, you can look up the boulevard or you can look down the boulevard and, and you can see what, what you can see, but again, unless there is something in writing which is enforceable as a civil matter, we don't protect views.
Oh, I know that.
You know, I mean, we
I know that.
Unless it's an easement or a part of a deed process, there, you know.
Okay.
It is what it is.
And one last question, if I, if I may, was to chair. The one and a half stories, is that what it was called? One and a half? What, so is a half-story livable or storage?
Well, a half-story could be livable.
It could be livable. Probably would be livable.
Yeah, I mean, you put a, a nine, twelve or a twelve, twelve pitch on it, you, you certainly could have a bedroom.
And that fits into the density that we're talking about up there.
Those structures could be much higher than one and a half stories. I mean, there, there is, there is height restriction there, but it's, the story and a half is not the limitation. They could be much higher.
Okay.
We, um, have a, uh, condition of approval at the, the applicant designate the trees that are going to be taken out and run that by DPW. Cause they're gonna keep some, I'm hearing them say that they're gonna keep some to meet the street tree requirement, but they're gonna cut others and maybe we wanna give the city the opportunity to weigh in on which ones will be saved and which will be cut.
Sure. Okay, two A, that the, the room would, would be reviewed by the city department.
Yeah, they have to designate, right. But that basically be it. Um, alright. Are there any other questions or comments?
The percentage of green space, is that within the limits to allow?
Yes, they have. I don't see the calculation, but they, they
Perhaps Mr. Grunier could give us a green space calculation for this project?
I believe Fieldstone could give you a calculation, Chris.
Chris, okay.
Mr. Chair, can I, may I just say something again?
Let's hear from Mr. Gita first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just, excuse me, I'm just looking, I'm just looking forward in the notes here. I have a, I believe it's in the notes and there's, there's a nowhere note here. Believe the requirement is sixty percent. And I'm just trying to find our calculation here. I'm not seeing it right off, but I can certainly run a few numbers and, and get that to the board to make sure that that meets that requirement. But again, I'm, I'm fairly certain that it does. Again, the lot does go, you know, far to the, to the east, so it's a larger, you know, it's, it's two acres. So as far as, and it's all wooded up behind these cabins.
We, we would have them, uh, the requirement is that they can't, could not exceed forty percent coverage.
Right.
We certainly will have them do the calculation and if they exceed that, then would be
Because like those sloped areas behind, I know it's considered green space, but it's not really absorbing space for water, you know, it's, uh, it looks behind cabin like three and four here, I believe. You know, it looks like it goes up at quite an angle. Is that considered green space even with a steep slope like that?
It is considered green space, yes.
So we're happy to, we're happy to accept the condition as far as that goes. Again, I apologize for not being able to, to put my finger right on it, but I'm, I'm certain that we meet that requirement.
So we can put that in as an additional condition that it not exceed the maximum lot coverage, which is what? Forty?
Yes, I believe that's correct, yeah.
Alright, and that, you would be able to do that even with the addition of an, an additional building?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm confident, Mr. Chair, that they do not exceed their coverage area.
We went through the, yeah, Mr. Chairman, we went through the calculation at one of more meetings. It might have been the conceptual to satisfy that. It's, it's not on the plan, but we will be happy to submit that and recognize the condition.
Yes, it will be in the plan. Okay, any other questions for anyone about anything?
Mr. Chair? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay, Stacy, you go.
Uh, and it might be actually for Dean. I'm just, in their notes, it says that they were gonna remove the stumps. And I'm just wondering if the stumps were left in place, would that help with the drainage at all?
Uh, i- in general, it does, but I believe that note is intended for areas where they are doing actual construction as opposed to outside of that.
Gotcha, okay. I was thinking of something closer to the street.
Right, we, we would certainly encourage them to leave stumps where they, where they are not constructing either driveway or, uh, structure.
Good that you weren't stumped by that question. Charlie, your turn.
Thank you. I, I just, I'm gonna vote, uh, no on this plan as it is now. And I, I, one of the main reasons is that, um, the water situation. We all know that we're getting a lot more severe storms than we got even ten, fifteen years ago. Which creates, you know, we have a one in a hundred year storm every, seems like every couple of years. So I just think the applicant and with guidance from somebody in the city, needs to do more to mitigate that runoff. Whether it's a, a storm drain right at the foot of the hill with a, with a grate to, to take up that water and direct it into a proper drainage area or something. But until that's done, I, I just think this plan, uh, either that put, be put in as a, another conditional statement or they come back with something better.
My understanding is there is, there is a stormwater plan for this site.
Peter, I, I agree with Charlie. Um, if you look at the topo, there's some angle to this and I don't see any, it looks like it's gonna funnel right to the driveway and right out onto the boulevard and across the boulevard.
If, uh, if I can just mention, if you look at the Google photos, it actually shows water sitting there after the rain and how it runs. So it runs, what little water runs down the driveway and doesn't go into the grass area. It goes down and then there's a ditch that runs It goes down and then there's a ditch that runs to the south and you'll see where the um the head wall is to the south of the property. So everything is designed to stay already on the east side of the road drained down into that culvert and then across. Um and I think that is all within the city easement.
Is that that's existing, you mean?
Correct.
Okay, I can I can add a little bit more. I mean, as part of this also, we we have submitted and got approval for the state shoreline uh permit. And as part of that shoreline permit, uh the proposed uh building to the replacement buildings, um we always specify having stormwater management in that essentially as far as drip edge, um crushed stone infiltration edges along all the buildings and and typically along the edges of the roadways as well. Um it basically slow that runoff down if it were coming off of the the uh roofs um and capture it and put it into, typically, we would do um small infiltration basins and that sort of thing. So that's something that is incorporated into the state shoreline permit. Um as far as that that permit goes, um it is kind of a a a living document, if you will, and if things change and if basically from the proposal, you know, we can amend that permit and add additional stormwater treatment as well.
Shouldn't the stormwater treatment plan be on the plans that are before us tonight?
Um, well,
I mean, what did TRC, what did what did what did you present to TRC regarding drainage?
I I believe they were these plans.
Okay, without a stormwater management plan indicated.
There's not a separate, that's correct. There's not a separate stormwater management plan. It's it's kind of incorporated into these plans.
All right.
Yeah.
I think we need that.
Okay, um. Any other questions for the applicant or discussion by board members regarding this application?
Uh just a question for Dean. Dean, as far as a stormwater management plan goes, is that required if you are not changing the grading on a site?
I think we were looking at it from that standpoint, yes, Brett. The 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 proposed driveway is essentially where the current driveway is. And it's it's, you know, the pavement obviously is going to be improved and there is some expansion of that pavement. But yeah, I think that was the thought process.
Well, I've also heard tonight that that gravel is considered an impervious surface and uh I always thought that wasn't wasn't so. But um other than the stormwater drainage plan, is there any other questions that members of the board would have regarding this application? Dean, is all the questions that are being raised here by the abutters and members of the board, can they be addressed uh by staff by uh changing the the conditions in the CUP? Or do we need to come back?
Um, certainly the issue of the fence in reviewing the trees to remain and the whatever the, you know, to do the the a coverage calculation, yes, we can do those with conditions and we certainly can confirm that. But if 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 you are concerned about stormwater, we we do not have a plan that we could check anything against at the moment. So
Well, it's not for nothing, but it's probably about twenty five hundred feet from the water intake to the city of Laconia. Just saying.
Yeah, I don't I don't know what that distance is.
So what's the pleasure of the board? We have a number of options before you this evening.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve PL two zero two one dash zero zero four five SP and zero zero four six SU um with the staff recommendations and the following changes and addition. Uh staff recommendation two A as far as the tree removal goes, uh will be reviewed by the city and approved by the city. The addition of two E, which will be the addition of a six foot white vinyl fence, be added along the property line. Addition of two F, which requires the cutting off of use of water from the private well on the abutting property. And also the addition of two G as far as include the green space calculations on the plans and it shall not the green space should be greater than or equal to sixty percent.
We've motion made by Mr. Bellevoe. Was there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yes, let's discuss some more.
Please, you may proceed.
Before I vote, I would really like to see a stormwater drainage plan.
So would I.
It's hard for me to approve what I'm seeing now. It doesn't look like there's forty percent building coverage. It looks like, you know, if I'm looking at this, it looks like more than forty percent. And they say, well, we think we have forty percent, but we don't know for sure. And we don't know where the stormwater is going. So before I vote, I would like to see some of that. I would like to table this till next month and look at more detailed plan.
Well, the motion is to approve or or vote it down.
But I you asked for discussion and I have to voice my opinion. I'm not even sure if I'm voting.
Right, no, I understand that. I'm just, that's another motion is all I'm saying.
And I think it's also misleading because when you look at the development of the parcel, the parcel goes far to the east and there's a bunch of green space back there that has not been developed. It's not just that area. And I don't know if we can require a stormwater plan and deny it because of that if it's not required, if they are not changing the grading and they're still under the um green space requirements.
What do you think of that, Dean?
I can't speak for the developer, but if I was them, I would, I think I would prefer that you table it as opposed to deny it because of lack of a stormwater plan. If if that's if that's the major hiccup, then you
Well, there's a number of questions that were raised.
And 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 get those answers.
Well, Mr. Bellevoe's motion does cover all these items, I believe. But it would leave the what I'm getting at is it would basically leave the post approval uh uh details up to you, up to staff. Where it's usually the board prefers that those be done before the matter is brought to a vote in public hearing.
Right, which is why you want to table it. If if that's the case.
Would the maker of the motion um be willing and the second to withdraw the motion in favor of a motion to table this? And we should let the applicant weigh in on that, too.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair, John Cronin for the applicant and people chime in, of course, you know, delay is uh is hard for them at this particular time. They've got a unproductive property there. They're certainly willing to do whatever it takes to make uh everyone comfortable with the drainage, whether that's to Mr. Trefethan or for Iway or whoever the expert there is, certainly didn't come up at TRC is something that was necessary or it would have would have been done. And I think the impression was because of the grades, it wasn't something that was required to get a complete application and review. So, you know, we'd be open to a condition of approval that they provide a plan and satisfy Mr. Trefethan or whoever that it works. If he's uncomfortable with it, certainly he would have the discretion to require it to come back to another meeting. But at least that would allow us to expedite it and not drag things on.
Well, the motion that's before us right now, unless modified, is to approve or deny the application as it stands.
Yeah, I'm I'm going to ask Mr. Granier to uh to weigh in there that if this the motion doesn't pass, someone would have to make another motion to deny, right? Because the numbers could be different. Or if the motion fails, does it deem to be denied?
If the motion fails, then it's denied. You you're back at the drawing board.
Which uh, no, I think that's a that's a several steps backwards. So Pete, you're on there. If you want to comment in terms of doing it, you know, we'd prefer maybe the motion be amended to allow us to work with staff to get it right and give staff the discretion to bring it back for a meeting if necessary.
I'm with that if that's possible.
Okay. Well, I want to apologize to the applicant and the abutters for this because this should have been done before the matter was even brought um before the planning board.
No apology needed on our part. Everyone, you know, really helped and fashioned it and will take some responsibility for it as well. So I mean, it's one of those things. It's uh there's always something, it seems, but uh we would, like we say, we're not trying to avoid any responsibility. We have a state obligation to control our drainage on our own property anyway, so we have to make sure that it works.
I understand that. Um, that's um I'm just making the comment that that it it was unnecessary because these were all foreseeable objections and suggestions. So we have a motion and we have a second. The maker of the motion, you wish to go forward on this or I mean, we have to decide this motion up or down before we could talk about anything else, right?
Okay.
If you withdraw it.
No, so let me do this, Peter. Let me change my motion then in light of what the applicant has said.
Yep.
Whether whether it is required or not, I guess we're going to move, we're not going to move forward unless we see a stormwater plan. I have heartburn against that because if it's not really required, who are we to go against the regs and say, well, we want to see it anyway? But if that's the case and and the applicant was ready to move forward with this, we've heard so many applications where people are looking for extensions because they haven't been able to keep up with their original plan. This applicant boots on the ground was ready to go and now we're going to hold him up. But I will amend my motion to table this until the next uh planning board meeting in uh July, whatever that date is, if someone can tell me. And um the applicant can go ahead and work out the kinks with the stormwater plan and then come back before us in July.
You withdrawing the motion originally to approve?
Yes, and submitting one to table it until next month.
Is the second agree with this change? I forgot who seconded it. I'm sorry.
I did. I I have a bit of difficulty. I I I wonder if we couldn't require that that the applicant work with staff to provide an adequate drain water removal system or whatever um at leaving, as you, I think, suggested, Mr. Chairman, that uh that or or perhaps Dean did, that they could come back to the planning board if they fail, if the applicant fails to provide a proper plan. That would be my preference to tabling it. This is the building season. I'd like to see him be able to go forward.
Well, procedurally, though, um the motion is to approve or or not approve. And we the 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 original motion would have given the staff the discretion to fill in the blanks, so to speak, after our approval. Um there's problems with that. And and I have a problem with it because that's the work the staff should have done before the planning board meeting. These are not unexpected questions to arise. And if it's so steeply sloped to have no stormwater drainage plan on anywhere indicated on the plans or even a green space calculation. Street trees. It's um it's it's a little too touchy feely for me. I I I like to have firm conditions that we're voting on. It it's not fair to the staff either to put put it all on them after the fact. And it lays raises questions about the legality of what we do. Unless we have granted the staff the authority to act on our behalf to establish conditions that were not originally proposed that it could actually jeopardize the applicant's uh standing or could give ground to an appeal. Which would delay this project even more. Wouldn't it?
Well, I'll reluctantly withdraw my second.
All right. So the motion, we we need a second for the motion to table from somebody. All right, seconded by Mr. St. Clair. Any more discussion on the motion to table?
I just, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I I don't have an issue with the the second motion. I'd like to hear it one more time just to make sure I know what I'm voting on. Um but, yeah, I just want to throw out there that, you know, we've talked about a couple of different things. Um I just want to make sure that we do this. It happens occasionally and I don't want this to fall into that. I want to make sure that everything that they were tabling it for, the applicants know about, so we can come back next month and make a decision a little bit um more uh eloquently than trying, you know, than than jumping around and having them come back again for another table of the motion.
Yep, I I guess I would agree with that, Chief. Mr. Trefethan?
What's the question?
I I think what he was asking for, Peter, was for me to restate my emotion to make it clear. Is that right, Kurt?
Do it, yeah, because we actually confused the two motions at one point when people were talking. So I think it's just nice to get it on the record of a of a clean motion with that.
All right.
Okay, I believe that I am making a motion now for um PL two zero two one dash zero zero four five SP and zero zero four six SU to table the the application until the next meeting in July with the following issues. There were some additions to the um staff recommendations, which included uh the review and approval by the city for a tree removal plan. The installation of a six foot white vinyl fence between the property and the abutters, cutting off the water from the private well on the abutting property um and calculating to ensure that the green space remains greater or equal to uh sixty percent of the um property. And then also the addition of a stormwater plan to address how the stormwater coming from the site will be handled. Once those are added to and worked out with the planning department, they'll come back before us with the updated plans for the July planning board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bellevoe. Is that seconded?
I seconded it.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion? Sensing none, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Bruce Genie?
No.
Charlie Sinclair?
Yes.
Mike Delavecchio?
Yes.
Sarah Jenna? Yeah, she's not here, sorry.
She's here.
Um, I'm not going to vote on this one.
Um, I'm not going to vote on this one.
Kirk Biati?
No.
Rich McNeil?
No.
Brett Bellevue?
Yes.
Susan Hodgkins?
I, I don't think she's seated at this moment.
Yeah, I'm here, but I'm, I'm not allowed to vote.
She's here, but she's not here.
No idea anymore.
Yes.
Peter Burnett?
Yes. I believe the motion carries.
Five, yes.
I got my count right here.
Five three.
Five, three, yes.
Five, three, yes. All right. Um, I need to adjourn for five minute bio break. Everyone. We'll come back in five, okay?
Microphones are live. Just say that.
Did you make prediction on the time?
It goes as needed here. I can go all night long. As long as we don't go to the next. They do have, they do sometimes in the cutoff where they, they'll stop at ten. That's up to the. Probably a line.
Oh, that was a rough.
There is somewhere. I don't know. Is there a bathroom on this floor?
No, there's no bathroom on this floor.
No, Bruce, there's not.
Okay.
I don't, I don't.
Folks making their way back. Rich, where are you? Is that your home?
Yeah, I've been sitting in my sunroom. So it's a glass solarium.
It looks like you have a, a marquee behind you.
Exactly. No, it was a good place to sit.
Yeah, I wish I had an atrium.
Was a nice evening out here.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, the nice weather was just in time to miss the weekend.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, well. Such is life.
There'll be another one, right? We hope.
Yes. Hopefully many more.
The public is waiting for us.
What?
The reason, by the way, I think you should learn this is because I think we're still going to have Zoom meetings even after we.
Oh, I think so. I think it's, uh,
From now on.
I think it's the, wait, the future now.
They ought to learn how to do it.
But can we have, let's just say when we go back to regular meetings here, if a member can't make it, will they be able to attend by Zoom or no?
We'll get there.
Cause that would be.
Get to the end of the agenda and we can talk about that.
Yeah. So let's go.
I saw that.
All right. Are we ready to resume, folks? I would think so. We're going to call it back to order. At this time, our next, uh, item is PL twenty twenty one, uh, zero zero four seven S P. It's eight oh eight Weers Boulevard. It's a proposal to redevelop the property. Uh, the applicant, uh, is Macris Investments LLC. And the agent is, uh, Michael Malinowski. Do we have an applicant and/or an agent here this evening?
You need to accept first, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is it in order and ready for acceptance?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept application PL two zero two one dash zero zero four seven S P eight oh eight Weers Boulevard.
Seconded.
All right. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Sensing none, could we have a roll call, please?
Bruce Genie?
Yes.
Charlie Sinclair?
Yes.
Mike Delavecchio?
Yes.
Sarah Jenna?
Yes.
Kirk Biati? You're muted. He's still muted.
He nodded his head.
Apparently it won't love me. When I was looking at the plans, it wouldn't love me to use my spacebar. Now it does. Yes.
There you go.
Rich McNeil?
Yes.
Brett Bellevue?
Yes.
Stacy Susie?
Yes.
Peter Burnett?
Yes. All right. The application is accepted in, in order. Could we hear from the applicant, please?
Uh, yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Michael Malinowski. I'm with Allen and Major Associates. Um, I apologize, my video is not working this evening. Our, our business address is four hundred Harvey Road, Manchester, New Hampshire, and I am joined with, uh, Manny and Caitlin from Macris Investments. Um, I believe Don may be on from the architectural group as well. Um, but I, you can allow me to start. I'm going to share my screen here.
Certainly, you may proceed.
All right. Everybody see my screen?
Yeah, you could make it a little bigger for our old eyes if you'd like.
All right.
Uh, this is Don Watcher with Colar Texture, just letting Michael know that I am here if you need me.
Thank you, Don. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, as I had mentioned before, Michael Malinowski with Allen and Major Associates. We are the civil engineers for the project. The site we are looking at is located at eight oh eight Weers Boulevard, uh, according to tax map, one ninety nine lot two forty eight dash six. Um, it is the old Lazy E Motel. The proponent proposes to redevelop the site, uh, from sort of the tired, uh, lake shore cottages that had existed in that space, um, to a more upscale, um, rental, uh, facility for the project. Um, as you can see, I've highlighted the, the existing cottages and existing buildings in red. So we have four cottages, uh, located here along the property line. We have one that sits closest to the shore is an existing hotel building at this location here. And we've got a two-story residence, um, in this location, uh, the existing pavement, and parking area, uh, for the project is here. There is also, uh, shared access for the property here and one additional property on the other side. So there is a common sort of access that comes through and exits onto Weers Boulevard. Um, that work will remain, uh, so access will be continued to be provided throughout the project. So the proposal is to, um, keep the one existing cottage that closest to the waterfront, um, and renovate that, um, as part of the project. The four cottages located at this location will be raised, uh, or torn down and rebuilt, uh, slightly set back from their existing footprint, uh, to give greater separation between the waterfront. Um, additionally, the existing hotel building will also be, uh, removed and rebuilt, um, in the same, maintaining the same footprint of the foundation and three units will be constructed, uh, one here, one here and one here. These will all be stepped to sort of follow the grade, uh, from the existing parking lot down to the waterfront, uh, sort of maintaining views. As part of the proposal, the main access, uh, pedestrian access, um, throughout the site will be replaced, uh, compacted gravel, as you guys had, uh, had learned earlier is classified as, uh, impervious surface by most state agencies. Part of what we are proposing to do is change out all of the sort of tired gravel access, um, with brick pavers. So what you can see in this area here um, is brick pavers. Um, all of those brick pavers will be constructed, um, us- utilizing porous technology. So that means that all of these pavers will be, um, have an open graded, uh, between the pavers and approximately thirty inches of crushed material underneath to absorb any of the stormwater that happens to come down. Um, just for clarity, I've highlighted some uh, blue areas here. Those will still maintain the same look of the pavers, but those will not be, uh, permeable. Um, and the reason why we do that is those are the sort of main access points, uh, including stairs and ramps. And it's very hard to construct those areas, um, using porous technology. So those will still be pavers, but they'll be solid. Um, one of the other items that we are proposing is you can see in these green areas are designated rain gardens. Um, so stormwater will be collected into those. Uh, those will all be planted with vegetation that can take, um, inundation from, uh, stormwater, um, and thrive in that situation. So we do have water that's being sort of directed to there. I can go to our grading and drainage plan. So I've sort of kept the same methodology. The light blue is the brick paver areas that will be, uh, uh, non-porous or non-permeable and the remaining brick areas will be permeable. You can see that in these cottages, we've got roof leaders that are going to, um, permeable paver systems, um, at each of these locations. Um, additionally, as part of the parking lot enhancements that we are proposing in this area, we are providing a catch basin, uh, with some underground storage attenuation. Uh, currently all of this water sort of rushes down over the retaining wall and then rushes down towards the river, the lake. So part of what we are doing is providing, um, sort of a means to collect that, um, that'll be a desump uh, structure with a hood to sort of capture gross pollutants, uh, that may be in the parking lot. Currently, there's no sort of, um, treatment for any of the stormwater that comes off of this pavement. Uh, we are also providing a slow release, um, feature along this back edge to the use of a stone gabion, uh, which will sort of weep the water out of this stick of pipe, um, down the vegetated slope. Going down to the water. We do have an extensive landscape plan that was submitted as part of this. Uh, additionally, this landscape plan was also included for our um, current ongoing, uh, shoreline permit. Uh, you can see that we've got extensive greenery along this edge as well as in between the buildings and the sort of terraced walls as you sort of step down through the site. Um, we have gone through technical review process, uh, several of the items that had come up during the technical review were uh, providing a complete stormwater, uh, management report, um, including an operations and maintenance manual. Um, that has been provided to T R C, uh, through the use of the rain gardens and permeable pavers. Uh, we do show a reduction in both flow and volume for stormwater for the designated storm events, um, as required by the city. Additionally, um, a utility plan was requested to be implemented as part of the new work. So currently the site is serviced by municipal sewer and municipal water. Um, water is a single connection at Weers Boulevard, um, enters the house and then is distributed internally from the house to the old hotel and to the cottages is part of the new work. We are providing a dedicated uh, water service line to a main sort of meter room, a water room located in this unit here. From there, we distributed to the individual units, um, as well as the four new cottages and the fifth rebuilt cottage here. Uh, sanitary sewer will remain somewhat, uh, similar to what it did before, uh, gravity collection for the three units here, uh, that flow through. Gravity collection for the three units here that flow through this existing cottage here to the low point, a new pump station will be provided. There was an old pump station in this first cottage that has been since removed. There will be a new pump station that will collect all of the effluent and provide a force main to an existing condition up at Weers Beach. Also, as part of the new work, a new power service is being proposed. There is currently overhead lines that run along Weers Boulevard. We are proposing a new utility pole, which we are working with the power company to have cited, and a new underground service will be provided with a transformer and underground distribution to the new units that are in the old hotel footprint, as well as the four cottages along the property line and the fifth rebuilt cottage here. Several other items were locations of a dumpster area. I will sort of jump back to our parking plan. We have a nice enclosed there isn't a dumpster per se. It is all private trash pickup, so there will be bins located in this area here, which will be screened behind a an opaque fence with a gate. So none of that will be visible from the street or the residence. Be happy to open the discussions up to any members of the board that may have questions regarding the proposed work.
Oh, thank you. Any members of the board have any questions?
Yeah.
For Mr.? Is that Stacy?
It is. Sorry, my camera is not working.
That's okay.
Are you guys still planning on doing radiant heating for the driveways?
Yes, that is still the intention. There'll be radiant heat that will be proposed primarily along the main sort of walking path. So I believe we've got sort of radiant heat coming down this sort of center section. I know all of this new paver area up here will have radiant heat. There's also loops that will sort of run down through these areas as well.
Okay, so you're accounting for that as runoff during winter?
I will have to look into that and sort of see how that works. I gotta, we haven't quite come up with the final details as to how that radiant, especially in the permeable paver setup, where that sort of radiant lives relative to the positioning of the pavers.
Okay, got you. I was just curious because I've never seen it planned before.
Okay, any other questions? Any other questions for the applicant? All right, I guess none. Why don't we open the public hearing at 9:43 PM? Are there any butters or members of the public that wish to be heard? Any butters or members of the public?
Mr. Chairman, do we have?
Themselves that wishes to speak for or against the application, either in person or online.
All right. Last call. All right, we'll close the public hearing then at 9:43 PM, and we'll hear from Mr. Traficant.
Staff recommends the board grants conditional approval of the following criteria. We have a a one-year completion date. Again, this applicant has indicated that they are ready to go, and they have already started some preliminary work on the site that they are allowed to do. And you can see the rest of our conditions, and behind me, I have a hundred-page stormwater maintenance plan.
Will there be a quiz? A hundred pages, Dean? That's the, that's the instruction manual for their stormwater drainage system?
Yep.
Okay, but just out of curiosity, who keeps that? DPW?
No, we do.
Okay. And then presumably DPW can, if they have any questions, they can just come to planning and take a look. Okay. So any other questions for staff? And members of the board? Charlie, did you say something?
No, but I'm thinking something.
Well, you were thinking pretty loud there.
I'm just thinking what a great job these developer did with their work here. This is a great plan, and I think it's very thorough. So I'm just very pleased. I can't wait to vote for it.
Hi, this is Cal. Just want to follow up on that comment. All thanks to Dean and Rob. They pushed us to get everything in place and right in place. So thanks to the staff.
That is great to hear. Thank you so much. All right.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
You all serve a motion?
I'm, I'm ready. I've got my motion in.
Make a motion to approve PL 2021-0047 SP, 408 Weers Boulevard with staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Motion made by Chief Biati, seconded by Ms. Jenna. Any further discussion on this one? Sensing none, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Yes.
Charlie Sinclair?
Yes.
Mike Delavecchia? Sarah Jenna?
Yes.
Kirk Biati?
Yes.
Rich McNeil?
Yes.
Brett, Brett Bellevue?
Yes.
Stacy Susie?
Yes.
Peter Burnett?
Yes. Right, the motion carries. Excellent.
Thank you, everyone. Been a pleasure working with you.
And, and us with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is been continued to August. Is that the one?
Yes.
The applicant has requested a continuance of PL 2021-0061 SU for until the August meeting.
Could, could you vote?
We don't need a motion to take it off the docket, do we?
Yeah, you, I would appreciate a vote to accept. And then
Okay.
Table.
Well, it wouldn't be tabled because it's, they want to go two more meetings out.
Well, yeah, tabled August 3rd, yes.
Okay.
So we accept the application and then.
Okay.
So we accept the application.
Motion to accept has been made by the chief. Is there a second? Second made. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, roll call, please.
Bruce Chaney?
Yes.
Charlie Sinclair?
Yes.
Mike Delavecchia?
Yeah.
Sarah Jenna?
Yeah.
Kirk Biati?
Yes.
Rich McNeil?
Yes.
Brett Bellevue?
Yes.
Stacy Susie?
Yes.
Peter Burnett?
Yes. All right, the matter has been continued. Next up, PL 2021-0063 SP, 16 Academy Street. It's a proposal to convert three units with a law office and a waiver requested for underground utilities. I bet I know whose property that is.
Need to vote to accept this one too, Peter.
I'll make a motion to accept application PL 2021-0063 SP, 16 Academy Street.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? Sensing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Bruce Chaney?
Yes.
Charlie Sinclair?
Yes.
Mike Delavecchia?
Yes.
Sarah Jenna?
Yes.
Kirk Biati?
Yes.
Rich McNeil?
Yes.
Brett Bellevue?
Yes.
Stacy Susie?
Yes.
Peter Burnett?
Yes. All right, the application's been accepted. So as I said, I, I don't think we actually need a motion, but if you want a a motion, it would technically be a motion to continue rather than to table because isn't table to the next meeting? I don't know. I haven't picked up Robert's rules in a while.
Wouldn't let table on this?
No.
Well, oh, sorry. All right, hang on a second. Looking at the wrong one. So is the applicant ready to go forward, please?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Phil Brew Yard. I am here to ask the board to allow me to convert my one-story law office to a three-unit multifamily building. My law office and my apartment with a home occupation being a law office would be about 75% of the first floor, the existing first floor, and then there would be an efficiency apartment on the first floor too. And then there would be a one-bedroom apartment upstairs. There would be no change to the existing footprint. We would be adding paved walkways to the entrances, and we'd be adding a couple parking areas. There would be no exterior changes to the building. I've had a lot of help with this project. I, I realized that, you know, after my father died and after we just, we just didn't need all the space that I had in the building, and also with the way that the practice of laws evolving, a bunch of lawyers in a building anymore is not what happens. A lot of attorneys work from home and so forth and so on. And I am planning ahead a little bit. I, I like what I do, and I want to be able to stay there, and I'm between the two courthouses, and if for whatever reason, you know, I can't drive or there's a problem, I can go to the store and I can go to the courthouse and, you know, just keep doing what I do. And so I was able to bring Deputy Ruffo over there and take him through a tour of the building. It is an 1800s building and show him what my plans were, and he didn't seem to have any problems with it. And there is a fire department recommendation about a alarm system, which I have no problem with. And also, the building official was kind enough to come over and take a look at the property as well. We, we submitted our existing conditions plan and our proposed plan, and basically, we're just, I think the totality is we're adding two more doors to the outside that are egress doors, and those are in place of existing windows. So we're not even adding holes to the building. We're just using a window hole for a door hole. And those doors, by the way, face the courthouse, which you can't really see anyway, because the, the structure's on, the courthouse is, is close to my building. And so basically, that's pretty well it. Also, if you look at the pictures, you'll see that the electrical lines run down on, on my side of the street. They, they, they go right from Academy Street near the coffee shop, right down where the, right down the side of my building, and my electrical tie-in comes right from there. And so I would like to just continue my existing electrical tie-in. It, it's an infill situation, and where I'm requesting a waiver to be able to just keep my electrical service the way it is. And obviously, it goes without saying that a couple of more small apartments near the La Conia Central Core wouldn't be a bad thing because we, we need apartments like that. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and if there's not, thank you very much.
Any questions for Attorney Brew Yard? I can't think of a more conveniently placed law office. You are literally between the Superior Court and the Circuit Court, so.
I, I've been blessed, and I'm, I'm happy to report, we got a court order that we're going to actually be allowed to go back into the courthouse is on the 18th, so that's really nice.
Yeah, well, excellent. I'm good to hear that. I'm actually addressing you from my home occupation office.
Yeah.
Which I've maintained for many years, so. All right, thank you. Any questions? All right, let's open the public hearing at 9:55 PM. Are there any members of the public or butters that wish to be heard regarding this application? Mr. Moore, do we have anyone online that's waiting to speak? I don't see anybody raising their hands.
Nobody online or in person has indicated that they wish to speak for or against the application.
Thank you, sir. Then on that note, I will close the public hearing at 9:56 PM, and we'll hear from the staff on this one, please.
Our staff recommends the board grants the conditional approval with our recommended conditions. Nothing unusual on this one. We do agree that waiving the underground utility requirement for, in this case, makes sense.
Right. I think there's no argument about that. All right, any questions for staff? All right, and sensing none, what is the pleasure of the board?
I recommend passage of PL 2021-0063 SP.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Sensing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Bruce Chaney?
Yes.
Charlie Sinclair?
Yes.
Mike Delavecchia?
Approve.
Sarah Jenna?
Yes.
Kirk Biati? Rich McNeil?
Yes.
Brett Bellevue?
Yes.
Stacy Susie?
Yes.
Peter Burnett?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Brew Yard. Good luck to you.
Is that not a sign of the times that the real estate market is taking over the law services?
Oh, well, well, it's a sign of the times that, that, as he said, you can actually conduct a law practice remotely now. Although the, we are slowly losing that ability, I think.
Well, as you get older too, you know, you might not be able to do as much work as you could before, and you know, having the rental income from two apartments will, you know, help in one's retirement.
Yes, I can identify with that part of it too. Thank you. All right then, let's see. Coming up next, how many more do we have here this evening? It is almost 10 o'clock. Is the board willing to go beyond 10 o'clock to clear the docket? It is unusual, unusually lengthy.
We have someone here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Still have someone in the audience here for one item.
Okay. Oh, I'm just throwing that out there. The next one I'm seeing is PL 2021-0064 SU, 375 Endicott Street North, the Cedar Lodge Aqua. It's a boundary line adjustment.
Mr. Chairman, could we move to the Mass Ave application? That would get.
Is there any objection to jumping ahead to that one and then coming back to?
Yes.
Endicott? No, was that a yes to my, any objection? Maybe I should rephrase the question. Does anyone have an objection?
No.
Okay. All right then, we'll come back to PL 2021-0064 SU and move ahead to PL 2021-0065 SU, 34 Mass Ave, 35 and 37 Reagan Way on a boundary line adjustment.
You need to accept.
Is this application ready for acceptance?
It is.
I'll make a motion to accept application PL 2021-0065 SU, 34 Mass Ave.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Sensing none, may we have a roll call, please?
Bruce Chaney?
Yes.
Charlie Sinclair?
Yes.
Mike Delavecchia?
Yeah.
Sarah Jenna?
Yes.
Kirk Biati?
Yes.
Rich McNeil?
Yes.
Brett Bellevue?
Yes.
Stacy Susie?
Yeah.
Peter Burnett?
Yes. Motion carries. So I see the applicant. Does the applicant present there?
He is.
Yep.
Okay. Um. Uh, you may proceed.
Yeah, so um, basically what we're doing is um, just want to break off the, um, you'll see, um, our lot extends three hundred feet um, from uh, behind our neighbors. And we just want to break off some of that and sell it um, to the neighbors. Pretty easy.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Sure, um, David Thompson with thirty-four Mass Ave.
Okay. All right. So you're, uh, you want to subdivide and then sell um, the second lot that's being created?
Nope, actually, it's just a lot line um, adjustment. Um, they're just incorporating the land into their own uh, properties.
All right, right, I misunderstood. Thank you. All right, any questions for the applicant? Sensing none, uh, we'll open the public hearing at ten oh one P M. Are there any members of the public or butters that would like to be heard regarding this boundary line adjustment?
Mr. Chair, nobody has indicated online and nobody else is in uh, present that wants to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I'll close the public hearing at uh, ten oh one P M. And we'll hear from the staff. What is the staff's recommendation?
Our staff recommends the board grant uh, the uh, approval of the uh, the series of proposed boundary line adjustments.
Okay. Now, you say series of boundary line adjustments. Is this the um, it's adjusting more than one boundary line?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're moving thirty-five, the rear lot line for th- for thirty-five Reagan and the rear lot line for thirty-seven Reagan are moving back towards uh, the paper street that was never developed.
Oh, we love those paper streets. Okay. All right, any questions for the staff? Well, sensing none, then what is the pleasure of the board?
Chair, I have a question. Are these future buildable lots, Dean? I don't, I'm not sure what we're doing here.
The, the intention is for um, the two lots on Reagan Way to uh, obtain more land. And the stated goal from them is they, they don't want a house built behind them. So they're, they're just, they want to incorporate the land into their lot.
Very good.
Um, the so-called Belvedere Street is not developed. The city has no interest in that property. And uh, while it's not part of this action at any point in time, if the adjacent property owners wanted to take the proper civil action to uh, incorporate that land into their property, they could do that.
Did you say Belvedere Street?
That portion of Belvedere Street, yes.
I think it's called the Belvedere Street Extension.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that public property where it says AKA Belvedere Street?
The ownership of that property is undetermined. We believe it is technically still owned by the original developer from eighteen ninety.
Very interesting.
But they obviously have been long gone and uh, it's just, it's just a piece of unclaimed land. And under the statutes, the adjoining property owners could take over that land if they so desire. They have to take the action. We, you know, we're, we're not going to.
So essentially what we're doing, the, the two houses on the cul-de-sac of Reagan Way are gonna get bigger lots.
Correct.
Very good, okay.
It's pretty straightforward, then. Any other questions for staff? All right then, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve application P L two zero two-one dash zero zero six-five S U for the boundary line adjustment.
So maybe, Ms. Jenny, it's uh, seconded by the chief. Any further discussion? Um, could we have a roll call, please?
Chris Chaney?
Yes.
Charlie Sinclair?
Yes.
Mike Delvecchia?
Yes.
Sarah Jenna?
Yes.
Kirk Biati?
Yes.
Rich McNeil?
Yes.
Brett Bellevue?
Yes.
Stacy Susie?
Yes.
Peter Burnett?
Yes. Uh, the motion carries. Boundary line adjustment is uh, approved.
Thanks, everyone.
Um, thank you, thank you.
We're at nine nine and I am going to recuse myself.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, we, we have to go back to the one we skipped, which was uh.
Oh.
Thank you, Ron.
Got me all confused. So let's see, we just did so. P L twenty twenty-one zero zero six-four S U, three seventy-five Endicott Street North. Is the applicant present? No, is the application ready for acceptance?
Ready for acceptance, yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept application P L two zero two-one dash zero zero six-four S U for three seventy-five Endicott Street North.
Thank you. Motion made, second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? We have a roll call, please.
Bruce Chaney?
Yes.
Charlie Sinclair?
Yes.
Mike Delvecchia?
Yeah.
Sarah Jenna?
Yes.
Kirk Biati?
Yes.
Rich McNeil?
Yes.
Brett Bellevue?
Yes.
Stacy Susie?
Yes.
Peter Burnett?
Yes. All right, the motion carries. The bound, the uh, application's been accepted. Could we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, Chris Dupree, uh, on behalf of the applicant Aqua Vista LLC. Uh, I believe this matter is familiar to the board. Um, Cedar Lodge was in a month or two ago uh, to take care of some of the boundary line adjustments on their end. And this is the final step in the process uh, to eliminate a boundary line uh, between Aqua Vista and Cedar Lodge where their currently existing pool and tennis court which sits uh, kind of in front of the aqualand uh, would be discontinued. Uh, we uh, went to C B A uh, and received uh, the approval there necessary and have gone through T R C with no comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chaney. Any questions for the applicant? Any questions? All right. And we'll open the public hearing at ten oh eight P M. Are there any butters or members of the public that wish to be heard regarding this matter? Anyone wish to be heard? Mr. Moore, do we have anyone in the queue?
Mr. Chair, nobody has indicated that they wish to speak for the application.
All right, then the chair will close the public hearing at ten oh eight P M. And staff recommendation?
Uh, staff recommends the board grants the approval with the listed staff conditions. Um, this finishes, as uh, Mr. Dupree mentioned, this finishes the process that was started a few months ago. Um, where um, both Aqua and the Cedar Lodge are doing uh, in uh, long-range planning here for their, for, for their individual properties.
All right. Very well. Any questions for staff? All right, then what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve application P L two zero two-one dash zero zero six-four S U for the boundary line adjustment with the listed staff recommendations.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any uh, further discussion? Sensing none, may we please have a roll call?
Bruce Chaney?
Yes.
Charlie Sinclair?
Yes.
Mike Delvecchia?
Yeah.
Sarah Jenna?
Yes.
Kirk Biati?
Yes.
Rich McNeil?
Yes.
Brett Bellevue?
Yes.
Stacy Susie?
Yes.
Peter Burnett?
Yes. All right, the motion carries. The matter has been approved.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
And good evening to you, sir. And I am going to, uh, as I said earlier, I'm gonna recuse myself from the next matter and hand the gavel over to Mr. Delvecchia.
Okay, before us, we have uh, Pogus Elm LLC. Amendment to site plan for conditional use, merger, and additional commercial space and residential units. Expand parking, adjust boundary line along railroad avenues, and reorganize parking along the north side of railroad avenue. Is the applicant here? You have to approve it first?
We need to accept this one.
Can we uh, have a motion to accept this application, please?
I'll make a motion to accept application P L two zero two-zero dash zero zero nine eight S P, amendment one, and zero zero nine nine C U P amendment one.
Thank you, Sarah.
I got more. P L two zero two-one dash zero zero six-seven S U for forty-nine to sixty-three Elm.
Seconded.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion before the board? Roll call, please.
Bruce Chaney?
Yes.
Charlie Sinclair?
Yes.
Mike Delvecchia?
Yes.
Sarah Jenna?
Yes.
Kirk Biati?
Yes.
Rich McNeil?
Yes.
Brett Bellevue?
Yes.
Stacy Susie?
Yes.
Is the applicant on, online?
Yes, ready to speak.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and uh, staff. Peter Howard from Stephen Smith and Associates, Division of DuBois and King, Guild for New Hampshire, I'm here representing uh, Pogus Elm One LLC. I'm from uh, Dallas, Texas. And if I could uh, share the screen? Uh, I'm rep. All set?
Yep.
Uh, the properties uh, we're dressing tonight were formerly uh, forty-one to sixty-three Elm Street. Uh, this is Elm Railroad Avenue, Park Street. Uh, the properties were forty-one to sixty-three Elm, nine Park Street, and ten Railroad Avenue. That's the uh, CJ Avery property. Back in December second, twenty twenty, a site plan was conditionally approved uh, for this project without uh, ten Railroad Avenue. This was a site plan that was presented. There were two existing lots that were merged. There was a conditional use permit for performance zoning accepted and approved. And that was to allow for construction with setbacks less than the required setbacks, but actually greater than those of the existing buildings. Uh, since that time, uh, ten Railroad Avenue uh, has been added to the uh, project. Uh, tonight, we're seeking, uh, this was the location of the ten um, Railroad Avenue. Uh, tonight, we're seeking approval, amending that twenty twenty conditional uh, site plan. Also, amending the conditional use permit for performance zoning uh, for the setbacks and also a boundary line adjustment. As of today, all the lots that we're talking about in this area are, have been merged into one law. It is now tax map law three sixty-seven dash seventy-one twenty with a nine eleven, nine one one address of fifty-one Elm Street. Uh, regarding the amended site plan, all the existing structures on these lots uh, have been raised and removed. They're gonna be replaced with new structures. The new structure uh, will support eleven thousand square feet of commercial space and twenty residential units on the second and third floor of this three-story building. Uh, that's here and here. Parking uh, along Elm Street and Railroad Avenue is being reorganized from parallel parking here on Elm Street to uh, uh, head-in parking. And the parking along Railroad Avenue has been uh, reorganized. There will be no parking uh, on Park Street. Uh, the, there is uh, included in the project the construction of a controlled access covered parking area accessible from Park Street. That is this part of the building. It's accessible here off Park Street. It is uh, twenty-three spaces. There's also a construction of a controlled access covered parking area accessible from Railroad Avenue. Underneath this structure is uh, an additional twenty-one parking spaces, which is accessible through the building off from Railroad Avenue, comes in here and it goes into this in-and-out area right here. And then underneath uh, will be a, a covered parking space. Water and sewer services are being upgraded and all new. New drainage structures are proposed, including an underground uh, uh, storage and treatment uh, area by this enlarged um, uh, pipe for uh, storing and infiltrating water, all stone all around it. That's the uh, stormwater treatment. New sidewalks will be constructed along Park Street. It's gonna be a new sidewalk uh, from Peter's property all the way down uh, Park Street along Elm Street and then new sidewalk all along uh, Railroad Avenue and out to over where the Baptist churches. The uh, there's gonna be two new locations for uh, garbage collection. That's one here, which will be fenced and screened. And then the other one is in this uh, alleyway between the building and the garage. That's in the back here. There is a pedestrian bridge on, from the second floor uh, the residential units uh, here into the garage. That second floor, that's designed to be high enough so a garbage truck can get under it, get to the dumpsters here, do what they need to do and then back out and uh, take the garbage. The street lighting uh, along Elm Street and Railroad Avenue is going to be altered and that's going to match the uh, decor of the Elm Street Bridge Corridor uh, using those same fixtures. New street trees will be planted along Park Street, Elm Street, and Railroad Avenue. Uh, just a quick comparison, in the twenty twenty plan, there was about twenty-seven thousand square feet of property. In the amended plan, that's gonna include the CJ Avery lot, there's now forty-one thousand square feet. The existing parking on the original plan was existing thirty-one. What was required was fifty-five and we proposed fifty-six. On this amended plan, there are fifty-three existing parking spaces. Sixty-seven are required. We're providing ninety-one and that includes uh, public and private spaces. That's, in other words, the spaces along Elm Street and the spaces along Railroad Avenue, as well as this parking and the garage parking. The green space uh, in the twenty twenty plan, the existing was about twenty-two point five percent. The proposed was twelve point nine percent with a requirement of ten percent of green space. In the twenty uh, twenty-one plan before you, the existing green space for all the lots was about twenty-two percent. The proposed is now thirteen point nine and with a ten percent required. Originally, the, the original application had six commercial units, about nine thousand one hundred square feet. New proposal is uh, nine commercial units um, with a, a little over eleven thousand square feet. And orig- the twenty twenty plan had sixteen residential uh, units on the second and third floor. The new proposal, the one before you, the amendment, has uh, twenty uh, residential units. The, regarding the uh, conditional use permit for performance zoning, there's no new conditions based on the amendment that we're proposing that would affect the uh, performance zoning. So we'd ask that that would be um, approved as it was in uh, twenty twenty. The, we're also um, the, the reason why there, there's no new um, aspects to it is because the city council has uh, aspects to it is because the city council has approved a boundary line adjustment that we have proposed. And that is to straighten out the property line along Railroad Avenue. This, this area, this dash line was the original property line, and it would have cut right into the, the right angle extension of the proposed building. The, we have agreed on a boundary line adjustment, which needs to be approved tonight between the city and Pogus Elm 1 to run the new boundary line in this direction to, to here and then up. Pogus 1 would give up this area, the city would give up that area and that area to straighten that out. And then we were able to meet the setbacks and have a much cleaner plan and further define a right-of-way for Railroad Avenue. Public Works has reviewed this and agrees with this proposed boundary line adjustment. Also allows for sidewalks on the city property, which would be this area and this area up to that line and then over there. But the city and the applicant have, are working out an agreement on maintenance of these. So shouldn't be any problem there. The construction, as you, I'm sure you're aware, has already begun based on that 2020 conditional approval. It's expected to take about 18 months and I hope for a completion at the end of 2022. Thank you for the opportunity to present the amended plan to you.
Very good. Are there questions for the applicant?
Real short question. On the sidewalks there, so those are the sidewalks, whether are sidewalks now? Or is that going to be further in towards your property? That's one question. The second question is, you, you said you're working out the maintenance. Does that mean plowing that the city would do, or you guys would be responsible for?
Yeah, we have worked that out with the city. The city is going to plow along the curb line like five foot wide, maintain the sidewalk that way, and we are going to do everything toward the building from that, that five-foot strip. And yes, we are, we are improving the sidewalk along Park Street. And there was sort of a sidewalk there. Now it's going to be a well-defined curb sidewalk. There, of course, was sidewalk along Elm Street, and we are going to create a sidewalk along Railroad Avenue out to the Baptist church.
Okay, so the only other thing I wanted to say quickly is that I don't know what material they're going to use, but I hope you use concrete, because it just seems like concrete sidewalks have such a longer life and stand up better than our asphalt ones do. That's all. Thank you. There's no, it's flat.
But the lake is right there.
Damn.
Are there any other questions for the applicant from the board members? I think none, as Peter would say. Is there any members of the public that are wish to speak for or against the application? Rob?
Yes, Mr. Chair. If I may. My name is Peter Burnett. You may have heard of me. I live at the top of the hill on Park Street in a house that was built around 1840. This project abuts my lot on the south and on the east. Originally, when it was approved in December, it was just the south, and it was a building that fronted only on Elm Street. And now there's an L-shaped building or a second building that's connected, I believe, that makes it an L, a corner. So they're going to have storefronts on, a couple of storefronts, I believe, on Park Street. I mean, on Railroad Avenue that weren't on the original plan. So where I'm located right now, as most of you know, there's a huge hole in the ground. So big and so deep, in fact, that they had to drive 30-foot steel piles in, along Elm Street and Park Street to contain the site to prevent subsidence while it worked. It's been somewhat successful. There are some longitudinal cracks now, an inch wide that run parallel to the cribbing in Park Street. And I guess it goes without saying that all this redevelopment activity, which I have always supported, is beating the absolute crap out of the streets. 10-wheelers lined up in front of my house. The streets that, that are being affected by this project are more than just Park Street, Elm Street, and Road Ave, because the trucks are basically driving around the block. So that means they're, they're beating up on Gold Street, and some, some of them are exiting and entering off 4th Street. All of these streets have been neglected by the city. The city takes the position, I believe, that they were never accepted as city streets. We received a notice that they intend to do so regarding Park Street. I don't know what their plans are. I do know that the boundary line adjustment was necessary, as my family used to own the lot that CJ Avery was located on. And there never really was a railroad avenue back in the day, because all the lots kind of met in the middle. I have a couple of concerns. One is when they were driving those 30-foot corrugated steel piles into the ground, they were using a crane, a crane hoisted pile-driving device that was run by a compressor, a huge diesel compressor. It made the neighborhood basically smell like the Sumner Tunnel at rush hour. The all our house, my house and the houses across the street and the cars covered with dust from the construction site nearly every day. That's okay. I think this is a good thing for the neighborhood. I really like the fact that we're going to get the sidewalk problem fixed. As you heard, the applicant represent, there was technically a sidewalk that extended from Elm Street up Park, but for all intents and purposes, it basically ended in front of my house because it wasn't marked, and it was, there was no curb, so people would park on it. So this is an improvement for sure. Back before the approval last year, I walked this property line with Steve Smith, who I've known for many years, and we talked about what it was going to look like. He assured me that the parking garage was going to be not more than one story above grade at the top of the hill, meaning it, it would block the view of, I guess, Opechii from the first floor of my house, but the second floor would not. I see that the plan is still for the parking garage to be on two levels, which means it would be one level below grade at the top of the hill and one level above grade. I was concerned, however, when Tim Burke, the Bonnet Page and Stone clerk of the works, told me that they were intending to drive steel piles along the, the property line. Let me tell you, when those things were being driven in, things were falling off the, off the walls in my house. It shook the, the house like an earthquake. It lasted probably a week. It wasn't just my house that was affected. I've got some severe concerns about them doing that any closer than they are. And, and I would submit that from an engineering standpoint, they don't need to, because this parking garage is going to be built just one level below the grade at the top of the hill. Once, if they, if they would just do the parking garage last, the foundations for the other buildings would provide enough protection from subsidence that they'd be able to excavate the parking garage out from Park Street side and exit straight out to Elm. Footnote to that, I did bring the, an issue to the city council, asked for them to issue a special parking, I mean, a special traffic order to require all the heavy equipment, all the trucks, to exit directly to Elm instead of going around the block, but that was not done. But again, we can live with that. What I cannot live with is the thought of those steel piles being driven in along the property line. Now, perhaps he misspoke, but Mr. Burke seemed to indicate, based upon an orange line of paint that was sprayed along the property line, that that orange line of paint is where the steel piles would be. And if that's so, then it's within the setback. And we obviously object. The, the vibration from those things is unbelievable. Directly to my north, maybe 70 feet from the property line is the United Baptist Church. And I am under, I've been told that their steeple is in need of repair. There's a very heavy cast bell up there, and they have legitimate concerns as well about all the vibration and the, the construction, you know, incident to the construction being dangerous to their foundations. It would possibly be disastrous for mine. I also have a stone-curbed dug well that's 35 feet deep, and it was dug by hand at some point in the 19th century, if you can imagine that. And it's stone-curbed, it's beautiful, but there's, there's nothing holding those stones in but the earth. And I can definitely see that that well would be at risk if they were to be driving piles in just about 30 feet to the south, on the other side of my house. And more to my concern is the 100-year-old cherry trees that are located along that property line. When Steve Smith and I walked that property line, we, I talked about the, the possibility of putting back up a privacy fence that had been taken down over the years. The poster's still there. And he and I agreed that based upon the layout of the property, it might not even be necessary for a privacy fence to be put up there. And I offered to maintain what little green space there might be between my property line and their building. So I'd like to see that they, that, that it be made a condition that they, at least that they do not put any structures, even temporary structures, that close to my property line. I think an open question right now is whether my property line is a back line or a sideline. And I think that's important, because if it's a back line, it's 25 feet setback under the dimensional table, because my property's residential. If it's a sideline, it's still, I believe, five feet. So that orange line is clearly too close. So I'd like to see that as a condition in their approval, that they will not, that, that, that there'll be some determination as to what the setback is, that that be reflected in the, in the plans, and, and that they not be allowed to drive steel piles along that line or anywhere. I mean, they don't need it anywhere else. If you look at the site, you'll see the reason that they needed to do that is that they had to excavate for a whole floor below grade to put the basement in, below Elm Street. But the property is sloped, and I'm at the very top of the hill. So I don't believe that they would need to do that, but I'll leave that up to people that are more, more up to speed on the technical aspects of it. I'm not in, in opposition to this project. I've been in favor of it all along. I think what they're going to do is amazing and wonderful. But I'm also concerned about the possibility of permanent damage being done to my property, to those cherry trees, to the church, not to mention, you know, the things that we are, we know that we're going to have to live with, which is the, the dust and the noise and the vibration and all that. I think it's a good-looking plan otherwise. I'm just asking them to clarify whether they intend to drive those piles, and if they do, whether they would consider my proposition that it's not necessary because of the, the slope of the property and the fact that I'm at the top of the hill. And I think that about covers it from my standpoint. If you guys have any questions.
Is, Mr. Burke, are you able to address some of his concerns?
If you're talking about Mr. Howard, I, I, it's quite all right. Yeah, Mr. Burke is the site supervisor for Bonnet Page and Stone. Peter, I understand your concerns there, but because you are at the top of the hill, it's not a help, really. It's more of a hindrance, because we are going to have to go down a story to put that garage under. And it's, the, the material that's in the ground there is soft enough so that if we tried to open excavate there, it would, it would just totally devastate your lot. We just, you, you can't excavate for this garage without these piles going along that boundary line. And we're, the building is about seven or seven feet off from the property line. And to address your question about whether you're a side setback, because we have, it's, it's an established fact in, in zoning that because we have streets on three sides, that there is no rear setback on, on this particular lot. They're all side setbacks, so it would be five feet. You're absolutely right. If there was a rear setback in this instance, it would be a 25-foot setback. But under, as I say, because this road's on three different sides, there is no, there is no rear. They're all side, considered side setback. So, but I will pass along the concerns about the, you know, the church, the bell tower, and so that as construction proceeds, there will be consideration. You know, I, I don't know exactly what that will be. There are people that deal with these sheet piles more than I do, but there are going to be some definite growing pains to get through this. In order to get those foundations in, there are going to have to be more sheet piles put along your boundary line. I, I think that there might be another way to do it, and I'm just asking you to take a look at that. For example, if you phase it so that the, the foundations are in for building one and building two, before you get to the parking garage, building three, then you, you don't have to worry about subsidence on the south side. You can remove all the material that you want. If all you're doing is putting a foundation wall in five feet from my property line or seven feet, I don't see that you need to drive piles 30 feet in the ground. Well, we may not. That's my concern. And we may not have to put them 30 feet in the ground, but we're going to have to put them down deep enough to get a footing, which will be deeper than, it's probably going to be at least 15 feet from your driveway down to footing elevation. So we can't open excavate that. You, we'd be, you'd lose your driveway, you, you know, it would be, it would be disaster. Can't do a construction without, you're on that, you're on that east side, and there's nothing there in our buildings to support that until we get that foundation in. And the only, only one way to get it in is to put the, the sheet piling in to hold it. It's that kind of material that's there.
I had a quick question for, for either Peter or the other Peter. These, these piles that are being driven in, were they part of the original plan that was? Were these new things that have come up that are part of what we're looking at tonight?
No, we did, we didn't, I did not represent sheet piles on the original site plan, nor have I represented sheet piles on the amended site plan. But it's, it's just a necessary construction practice in order to be able to excavate in that material. And so we had, you know, the contractor and the owner had a sheet pile company, design sheet pile walls to be able to secure those, those areas, protecting Park Street, protecting Elm Street, protecting Railroad Ave.
those, uh, areas, protecting Park Street, protecting Elm Street, protecting, uh, railroad app.
So this is nothing new that was added with the changes that we're looking at tonight?
No.
Well, he's right. It wasn't, there was not, not mentioned anywhere that they were gonna have to drive these sheet piles. We didn't know anything about it until the whole house started shaking. And they, uh, didn't send anyone out to inspect the foundation until after they had driven all the sheet piles. And I think they did an inspection at the church as well. Um, I, I, I think there's got to be another way to do it, um, without having to destroy, you know, those trees more than anything else.
As I say, uh, the, you know, the angle of repose of that existing soil there is such that if we tried to open excavate along your property line, you'd definitely lose those trees.
All right. Well, I, I hear you. I understand. Um, I would just ask you to look into some, something, uh, any alternative than that. Um, I have a question about the curbs. Um, one problem that I have right now is the curb at the end of my driveway is about two feet too long. There's actually a section about two feet long that, um, that partially blocks the, the driveway. And I'm wondering if when the curbing crew is out there, whether they could perhaps remove that. I mean, I know we'd have to have DPW in on that because that's their thing, but, um, and I'd like to see a condition that the, uh, that the streets are repaired because they're in awful shape now. And eighteen months from now, they're gonna be cinder.
Well, actually I had a discussion with, uh, DPW, uh, just this morning. We went out, looked at the roads and talked about areas that would require repavement. Uh, we didn't talk about the, uh, damage on roads. Um, I guess we'll have to see what happens. Some of those roads are definitely, uh, 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 you know, probably not, uh, ha- have the base that, you know, a designed road would have today. They're old for sure. But I don't think the plan is to repave all, all the roads in, in Lakeport. Yes, the ones around us, it, it's part of the, it's gonna be part of the plan, but, uh, uh, we'll, we will have to see. If, if they're totally damaged, I'm sure we won't leave them all broken. Uh, whether or not we totally repave all of them. That's, you know, I think that's a lot to ask, so.
I know. I know it's a lot to ask, but I gotta ask. I, I've been trying to get DPW to do something about it for a while. The corner of Gold Street and Railroad Avenue is virtually undiscernible. It's just, um, a, a giant puddle surrounded by boats and, and their little blue stockings. That's it. That's the, the, the intersection of Gold Street and Railroad Avenue. Um, and the lower half of Park Street from my house down to the marina is, uh, just awful. I, and, and yet none of this was caused by the construction, but it's not gonna be improved by it either, so. All right, I've said my piece. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to speak?
He's, he's on, but he's on via phone, so he can't.
I did see, um, that Wayne Hackett was on the call earlier. He's, uh, he and his wife are on the, uh, the Board of Trustees. Someone's calling.
I am on.
You gonna turn your speaker off or whatever you got?
Does that help?
Yes, Mr. Hackett.
What is going on?
He need to mute whatever else you're listening to for the meeting.
I don't, can you hear me now? No.
Yes.
Could you identify yourself, sir?
Oh, Wayne Hackett.
Very good. Go ahead, sir.
Can I turn my speaker back on here or just stay with the, stay with the phone? All right. Hello, any, can people hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Oh, all right. I'm, I'm getting a thumbs up. Again, I'm Wayne Hackett. Uh, Laconia is my hometown. The, the UBC church is my church. My parents were married there in nineteen forty-four. So I have a bit of an interest in the building. Um, the, we're in the process right now of working through the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance to, 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 uh, round up some funding initially to do a building's condition assessment. We already know we got a couple of major problem areas and, and as Peter has said, one of them is the steeple. Back in, uh, back last week, May twenty-sixth, I met with Tim Burke, you know, the superintendent, B, BPS, and, and an assistant of his. And we gave, uh, I gave him the tour. We, we went all the way up to the bell level of the steeple. And just to show him what, what I face all the time. Here a couple of years ago, we were faithfully winding the clock. It's been a, it's an antique building and hundred and twenty-nine years old, but the, 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 uh, clock has been running for a long time. And every seven to ten days you wind it. Well, it got to the point where the movement of the steeple was so much that it would actually stop the clock, you know, one or two times during the week. So we gave that up. We had a, we had a timber preservation outfit from, uh, Maine come in and do extensive bracing inside the tower, inside the steeple, just to, just to reduce the, uh, the movement. And what we're concerned about now is, you know, of course, is the, is the, the sheeting shoring that's being done next door. A lot of vibration, a lot of noise. We're concerned about the steeple. It's a hundred and twenty feet tall. It's a lot of weight. It was done back at a time when it wasn't completely done with, uh, you know, timber joints and pegs. There's a lot of bracing that was nailed in. I'd say two-thirds of that tower is just up there with nails. And we've put, uh, a bunch of construction screws in to keep it from going any further, from moving. But, but the vibration of the sheeting work is really excessive. And we're really concerned that we won't have anything to restore next year if we take that route. We, we don't know what it's going to cost to fix the building at this point. I, I'm, I'm, I'm sure there's gonna be a number and a bunch of zeros behind it, but we just don't know what that's going to be. Uh, but assuming we are going to carry forth at some point with fundraising, with grant raising, all of those things, we sure would love to have something to fix. If, right now, the tower itself, because it's, it's oriented just like this proposed building on Elm, that you're doing on Elm Street. North is, is the, is the far right corner. You can see an outline of the building on, on this drawing. Uh, that corner of the building is in tough shape. We've had some roof leaks, some structural leaks in the eight-by-eight posts that hold the, the whole thing up. It's built like a barn. Uh, so there's a couple of major areas of concern. I showed Tim those things. He took extensive pictures, promised me a, uh, you know, a, uh, compilation of what he's taking with whatever we've discussed. I'm going to send him something at, at some point, just to make sure we're covered. But, uh, I really am worried about the condition of the building. Oh, the other thing about the bell, you just mentioned the bell. It was built, it was cast in eighteen ninety-one. It's probably an eight-hundred-pound bell. And, uh, we were advised when it, when the building was, when the steeple was reinforced. You know, huge letters on an email, do not ring the bell. With, worried about, about it make, taking an exit straight down. It's that heavy. And as, we've got to fix the tower. Simple as that. Right now, the tower is actually leaning towards the center of the church. So if that thing lets go, we, we really won't have to worry about fixing a thing. We'll have a, we'll just have a pile of rubble at this point. But it is a historic building. It's on the, it's on the National Historic Register. The organ i- itself is also, it's on another, another historic register. So we, we really would like to con- you, you to consider anything you could do to mitigate the, the vibration that, uh, is, is going to happen. What I'm most concerned about with is the, is the, is the sheeting you're going to be putting along the, uh, the southeast slot line of Peter's house. That is so close to the building that I'm concerned that we're, we're not gonna have much left, you know, simple as that. And I'm, I'm not trying to incite anyone. I don't want someone to go out there and actually add to the problem. I want you to be very careful there. Looking at your drawing, I, I can see where you're putting a retaining wall in. There's very little room between that retaining wall and the, uh, and Peter's property. It almost looks as though you're gonna be driving the sheeting on his property. I don't know how you could avoid it, to be honest with you. Uh, don't any, do you have any questions at all about the building itself? Anyone? All right. Well, I, I think I've said my piece. I am concerned. Park Street, by the way, is, is still a private street. I guess that came through from what Peter told you. Uh, don't know why there's eighty-seven uh, streets in Laconia that are still privately owned. Park Street is one of them. Uh, my wife actually gathered all of the assents to hand this thing back to the city so they could actually, actually, uh, maintain it because they, at some point, at, at, at one point, they threatened to withhold plowing, maintaining the street at all. And this work, especially the sheeting that's happened, you know, adjacent, right at, right off Elm Street, really, really did, did the number on the, on the surface itself. And I realize that whole sh- that whole site is sugar sand. And the sheeting's necessary for construction and safety, mainly safety. Uh, but I wish there was some way to admit to, to, uh, reduce the vibration that, you know, both Peter and the church folks are experiencing when they're in there pounding on it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hackett.
Can I ask a question? Uh, have you given any thought to having the bell removed?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's, at this point, it's a, it's part of the process. If, if the, if the steeple is going to be repaired, if that's part of the end result of our, of fundraising, that sort of thing. And one of the first things we do would be to take that out of the tower. Cause they, they had built most of it and then they, they, they put it in there, uh, at that level before they actually put the spire on from what we, what we found. So yes, uh, I think
I was wondering if you, I was wondering if you'd approach Bonnet Page and Stone about the possibility of them helping you get it out of there.
Yeah, it'd be quite the operation. It's, it's probably, I don't know, ninety feet off the ground. You know, it's a, it could be done, but you'd have to be, you'd be taking part of the tower apart to get it out. You know, cause there, the railings and all that around that open belfry were built, were all built.
Alternative is to have it in your main floor.
Have it in the church, yeah, really. Yeah, uh, the, we'd love to, uh, as part of reconstruction at some point, take the, take the bell out and put it on a, you know, put it in some sort of a um, bracket tree, you know, right on the front lawn, you know, to display it that way and not have to worry about it being so, so damn far off the ground.
The, 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 uh, crane that they use to, the pile, uh, to shoot, to drive those piles uh, would probably be adequate.
And that, I guess that was my point, Peter, was
That's the size of that one we used, that, that, uh, Melnup used to take your trees down. Remember that?
Right.
Most good, good sized, good sized crane.
I, I guess my point, Peter, was that, that maybe we could prevail upon Bonnet Page and Stone to, to go up with that crane and, and remove the bell and, and, you know, at, at least avoid the disaster of that bell coming out of the belfry and destroying the church.
Mr. Chair, I do have to get off this call. Um, we're going on eleven o'clock. I have to be up in like a couple hours, so I don't know what we need to do here.
Me too.
I, I will pass along those concerns. I appreciate the, the, uh, you know, the historic value of the church and, uh, the buildings in the area. And, uh, I'll pass it along and I'm sure we can have some conversation about that.
Yeah, we're, we're more than happy to see the construction. I mean, it's, uh, the owner's done a heck of a lot for Lakeport already. And we're glad to see this happening. We just try to, I'd love to see some of the existing structures remain, that's all.
Well, we, we don't wanna see a bell in, in your, uh, sanctuary either.
No, we don't want it in the sanctuary, that's for sure. Well, appreciate you listening to me anyway.
Good hearing you, Wayne. Thanks.
Thanks, Peter. Howard, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm under the impression that any
No.
damage done to private property during construction would be covered by your construction company or the owner of the project?
I guess that would, that's a good question for the contractor. I, I'm, I'm sure they have, you know, contractor liability insurance. I, I can't answer it, but I'm sure they have some kind of insurance, but we don't wanna get to that point to have to, uh, you know, involve insurance. We like to prevent
Right, I understand. But, um, you know, like the state, in my house in Florida, the state was expanding the bridge and they came and took pictures of the sidewalk in front of my house, the garage, any little crack they took a picture of. So in case it got bigger, they had documentation for it. They went right down the street, took a picture of everybody's house. So, you know, I don't know if there's any preliminary work like that before you started with the pylons, but I understand the neighbors' concerns. And I think there's gotta be a way to appease them. I don't want Peter's wealth to collapse.
No, nor do we. And I, I'm gonna definitely pass on the concerns, uh, and I, I'm, I'm sure there's some things we can do, although, uh, I do know, Pete, I, we're not gonna be able to construct along your house without putting some more piles in, so. Um, and the, the, uh,
It's slower.
Uh, you had mentioned the, the, I think there was some mention about the retaining wall that's in this back, uh, part of the property. We're going to just, uh, it's just gonna be high enough. Actually, it's being redesigned, just high enough to, to cover what's there now. It will be a little higher in this area. But, uh, from here on over, it's, it's, uh, it's just really masking the, uh, the rocks that are, that are gonna be left behind it, so.
You're talking about the east, the east line, um, where the restaurant used to be?
Yeah, it would be the north side of the Avery property between Peter's property and what was Avery's.
Yeah.
Now, the, uh, on, next to the building, there is gonna be some height there, but it's gonna come right down. So I don't know if you can see, I, I have it on the screen right now with my cursor in this area. Uh, it will be high, but then it comes right down and, uh, will only, you know, there, there'll be very minimal impact from, um, you know, three quarters of it. It, it's right here against the building where, uh, the, um, uh, it, it will be the highest. And the new building along Railroad Avenue, this GHNI, there's no basement in this one. So this is all gonna be on a slab. So there will be a substantial footing that will be necessary, but it's not gonna be the hole that, uh, you are seeing over on the Elm Street side. Now, let's
Any more questions or comments? Discussion?
Nobody else from the public wishes to speak for or against it. No hands are raised.
Thank you, Rob. We'll close the public hearing at eleven oh one. And bring it to the board for discussion.
Staff?
Oh, staff recommendations. Thank you, Chair.
Uh, staff recommends the granting of the approval for the amendment. Um, I, I will point out that number two A has already been satisfied. That was, uh, registered, uh, today.
We have enough votes. One of our members has left.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion by the board? I would like to entertain a motion.
If I can, let me just ask this question. It's getting late and, uh, that was a lot of discussion back and forth. The, um, the actual thing that we're deciding on now, first of all, is the boundary line adjustment, right? Because they're adding the Avery property. And then secondly, they've adjusted, um, some of the square footages for, for, um, retail space and they've added some parking. Am I correct in that?
Yes. This, this is a technically an amendment to their previously approved site plan. But you have, you have summarized what the amendment is.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve PL 2020, 008, uh, 98 SP and 0099 SP.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion with the board?
Yes, I, I just want to, you know, again, I'll, I'll direct this to you, Dean. So obviously, uh, I would think that the, uh, construction company and everybody involved would be liable for any damage that they cause these properties. But you guys, somebody will be watching that. And, and you're in, you must all be in some sort of communication about these potential problems with the, with the contractor, with regards to the property owners and stuff.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're, we're in constant contact with DPW. They're very aware of what's going on. I mean, everybody knows, just, you know, taking the condition of the roads as an example, they were, they were terrible before. They're terrible now. They're not going to get any better. And there's no point in doing any repair work while there's active construction going on. I mean, you can patch some potholes, but you're not going to go out and do a, a coat of pavement when you've got a construction going on for the next 12 to 18 months.
No, my, my question is really directed more to the, the properties themselves, the house next door, the church, property over. So everybody's aware of what's going on and, and, uh, the potential there. And I thought, Bruce's just, you know, uh, advice about getting possibly Bonnet Page and Stone to help with the removal of that bell while the crane is right there and that's all stuff that'll be brought up for conversation, I hope.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have something. Um, in the acceptance of the, of the application, we also had the PL 2021 0067. Does that need to be added to the motion?
I'm lost there, sir.
Yes.
There's a third, there's, there's a third piece to that. It wasn't mentioned in the motion.
We'll add it now.
Consider it added.
Yeah, I'm assuming he wanted to add it though.
Go ahead, Bruce.
I haven't got the numbers, so what he said.
It's PL 2021 dash 0067 SU.
She's got it.
Covered.
Once again, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Nope.
Kalina, call a roll call, please.
Bruce Cheney?
Yes.
Charlie Sinclair?
Yes.
Mike Delvecchio?
I approve.
Sarah Jenna?
She's left.
She's on there. Kirk Biati?
Yes.
Rich McNeil?
Yes.
Brett Belvam?
Yes.
Stacy Soucy?
Yes.
There, there you go.
Motion unanimously approved.
Can we quick talk about meetings?
Yes.
Peter's got to come back now.
Yeah, Peter, come back.
All right. Uh, thank you for doing that, Mike. All right. So I, I hear mumbling about, uh, what are we going to do about the meetings? Is that our next item of business at 11:05?
Peter, haven't seen you for over a year.
Right. I, I just assume keep doing them remotely, but I guess, uh, uh, I got no objection if we're going full live.
Well, let me, let me, let me tell you, we have been advised by our various, uh, New Hampshire Municipal Association, et cetera, in, from, from Concord that the governor's emergency orders that have allowed us to do the meetings in the current form, uh, is likely ending on June 11th. Uh, this does not mean that we have to stop doing Zoom. What it does mean though, is that, uh, because one of the provisions of the emergency order was relieving the board's requirement that the, that there be a quorum present at the physical location. Uh, so we could continue to use Zoom, but there would have to be at least five members of the planning board here in this room. And then the other members could be on Zoom and we could offer the option of a butters and or applicants being on Zoom and or in person. But the, the key point is you would have to have a physical location for the meeting and a quorum of members would have to be present at that physical location. Here, here. To.
I think, I think if the governor, if the governor's executive order expires, then we can no longer do remote meetings. But I think we could, uh, like you said, if the, if the board is present in, in, uh, in City Hall, we could certainly use this technology to expand the public's ability to participate, right?
Yes, we can still do that. Yes. And that, that's a, that's a, a, that's a policy discussion that the board could have. I'm not recommending you do that tonight. We could, you know, we can do that at another time, but I just want to, you know, it's likely that the, that the governor's order is not going to be extended. I think we all recognize what's been going on.
Yep.
Everywhere. Um, so that's.
Why don't we just decide unless we're otherwise instructed by the powers that be that, that we will, uh, resume, uh, the meetings with the members present at City Hall, uh, starting in July.
All right. So the, so, okay. So the, the next, that's fine. The next thing, uh, I want to remind you all that you need to do nominations and elections of officers next month. And Mr. Bonus has, has, uh, ended his uh, tenure on the, on the planning board. He has opted not to be, uh, at his choice, not to be, uh, reappointed by the city council. So, uh, someone will need to, uh, step into the role of vice chair. Just, just giving you fair warning. And that's, uh, would conclude my planning board report and I'm not aware of any newer old business.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you all. Uh, this is extraordinary. We went this late, but, uh, just my luck, we were at the end, you know? Thank you all for your service.
Good night.
Like to recommend you.